Yeah. Subdivisions or advisory, so they only decide. Yeah, City Council decides every subdivision. So they only decide, um, use permit, design review, variance.
Sign?
Yeah, yeah. But that's really, yeah, just use permit, design review, variance. Yeah, but for small cities, yeah. Yes. Yeah, yeah. And that's us too, so, so even if you, so say you have a design review and a, um, subdivision, the whole thing goes to council. So it becomes a recognition. Damian, hello. How's it going? All right? Yeah, yeah. None. They asked about, you know, the public comment letter we got and use of the barn and how that's gonna affect all the traction, and then also just like kinda noisy animal smell stuff, and they're like, what about the barn? And Autumn did a good job of like this existing non-conforming, they didn't, they didn't really get into like, they can keep using it for what it's been used for, but. Yeah, 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 exactly. But it was a good discussion, like, the points were brought up, but then it didn't go. Kinda put everybody on like, hey. I, I mean, the letter actually, I think it was very helpful to get it. Cause it just points out like, hey, like, get it, like, the issue that you're talking about.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the joint meeting of the Cattati City Council and the Planning Commission for this Monday, March 6th, and it is a special joint meeting. And with that, um, we're gonna do a roll call.
Commissioner Berman?
Here.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Jalardi?
Yes.
Chair Savage?
Present.
Councilmember Rivers?
Present.
Council, Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to the next item, which is public comment. Anyone wishing to, um, a public comment on the study session, please come forward. Oh, already then. Okay, um, do we have Zoom folks that would like to make public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to the next item, which is study session, and the first item is the 2023 Housing Element Update and Associated General Plan Environmental Impact Report Addendum, and I turn that over to the Planning Commissioner Chair for that item. Yes?
Uh, yes. Yes, Mayor, that, that item is just being continued to a date certain for the Planning Commission, and so, um, the Planning Commission will just need to, um, uh, make that motion.
All right, make a motion that we, uh, continue the Planning Commission Housing Element Update to March 20th? Do we need a second and all that?
I'll second it.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Berman?
Aye.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jalardi?
Yes.
Chair Savage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then we move, we'll move on to land use 101 presentation for the Community Planning Commission and the City Council, so. Oh, Noah, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey, and, uh, Chair Savage, Commission, Council, great to see you all up there. So take this opportunity to introduce Carla Duncan and Pratik Thapa. You might not all have met them yet, but they assist, uh, our department in a variety of ways, one of which are supporting the Planning Commission meetings, and so they're here with Kevin, city clerk, uh, learning the ropes, and also, um, kinda supporting the meeting tonight as it was officially a Planning Commission meeting before the, um, joint meeting tonight. Uh, so, just to get the PowerPoint going and start the discussion, this is the Land Use 101 Presentation. Last time we did this was about two years ago, it was January of 2021, uh, I think January 23rd, 2021. Um, we tend to do these when we have significant turnover, so new elections and new appointed, uh, commissioners. Um, the goal is just to give us a baseline understanding of all the things that go into land use decisions, because so much of what you all do is make those types of actions. Um, I apologize, it is a ton of information, uh, so I will use the drinking from a fire hose analogy. Um, but that's fine, please don't feel, uh, pressured to really comprehend it all. Um, the goal is really just to provide you with a reference tool, uh, so keep the presentation materials, have that on hand. Um, we want it to be conversational, so feel free to stop us and ask questions. Uh, Mr. Barker, the city attorney, is gonna, uh, be, um, taking the, almost the lead on this, uh, but, uh, he, he and I will tag team this presentation. Um, some of the slides we may just touch on, it may be very brief, but there's legal references there. Again, so that way you have that as a reference, and then frankly also, so we can point back to it at later times, uh, as we need to, when you see certain types of decisions or certain kinda procedural things that come before you. Um, so just so you at least have some type of an idea about why we're doing what we're doing, or why we're recommending what we're recommending. So with that, we're gonna jump right into it, uh, with an agenda slide. Uh, so this kinda gets into, um, the police power, so that's basically the, kinda the city's legal, um, foundation for how we can regulate most things. Uh, roles of commission and council members, then we're gonna get into general plans, which are kinda talked about as the constitution for the city, uh, specific plans, zoning codes, there's like a hierarchy of kinda the regulations. Then we'll get into some of the specific rules about subdivisions, et cetera. SEQA, always a giant topic, we could talk about that all day just, uh, for that itself, we won't do that to you tonight. Um, some of the things that, uh, the rights that get vested or kind of live with people's property, or once a decision's made, that folks can reference back to, they can transfer those rights by selling a business, for example. Um, findings, so that's one of the legal things that, uh, we talked about in the former, uh, action, you'll see those in every resolution. They should always be project specific. If you see findings from us that are generic, call us out on that, cause they knew, they do need to be project specific. Um, issues around takings, so that gets to some of the things that cities ask developers to do in exchange, uh, for granting those actions, and there's legal lines, and you'll hear city talk about, um, nexus to be able to ask for things versus pushing beyond that, which could be considered a taking under the law. Um, exactions, similar issues, uh, kinda the rights of the public. I've highlighted housing here, again, that's the topic we could speak to for a significant amount of time, so I'm gonna try to touch on some of the higher level things that I think, um, the community and the council and the commission will be seeing in our decision-making process moving forward, and then we'll open it up for questions, but obviously, please stop us along the way. Absolutely, we welcome them. And with that, I am gonna turn it over to City Attorney Barker.
Thank you, Noah. Uh, so the first part of the slides goes after, uh, just sort of the legal framework for, for your land use authority. Um, the primary authority that cities and counties have, and also the state legislature is the, is the police power, uh, the power to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. And the authority around land use is derived from that broader police power, which is set out in the California Constitution, Article 11, Section 7. Next slide, please. So here's a list of all the state laws that come up in the context of, uh, land use decision-making. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit about planning commissions, general and specific plans, zoning regulations, subdivisions, development agreements, SEQA, Brown Act, Permit Streamlining Act. I don't think we spend a lot of time on the Permit Streamlining Act, but staff has to deal with that all the time, and the Mitigation Fee Act. Next slide, please. A little bit about, uh, the role of the Planning Commission vis-à-vis the City Council and also staff. Um, Cattati's a general law city, you know, some of the other cities in the state are charter cities, and they can kinda make their own rules within a certain, uh, amount of framework, whereas a general law city is subject to the various statutes that set up the rules that govern cities, uh, San Francisco, Oakland, Los Angeles, San Diego, Riverside, some of the bigger cities are charter cities and have very, very special rules that are internal to their jurisdictions. Uh, most cities in California are, um, take the form of a city council, city manager, form of government. Basically, the city manager is the executive, uh, hires and fires all employees, and basically, um, the council is the policymaking body. Very, very typical in California and most western states. If you go back east, uh, the elected mayor is the executive and, and kinda runs the show from the executive standpoint, uh, it's an elective official. So it's very different in, on the west coast, I don't know what it's like in Minnesota, which is also a progressive state, but they, they probably have, a lot of the midwestern jurisdictions, uh, states are also sort of have city manager frameworks as well, but east coast and the south is pretty typically strong mayor kinda frameworks, like in San Francisco, Oakland, and, and LA. Uh, let's see. City councils, typically, you don't have to have a planning commission, the city council considers the planning commission if they desire, but most jurisdictions have a planning commission to sort of oversee the general plan, take action on, uh, the, the, uh, permit authorities that have been delegated to them, we'll get into that a little bit later. Um, and also to make recommendations on general plan amendments and zoning amendments and things like that. Um, the commission is generally advisory to the council on decisions that the council ultimately makes, and also your decisions, if you have, if the planning commission has permit approval authority, for example, on design review, uh, those decisions are typically appealable, so you're subordinate to the city council. Um, and just in terms of staff, the manager, uh, directs staff, uh, council doesn't do that directly. If they don't like how Damian's directing staff, they can direct Damian in a, in a way, so that's kinda how that works. Um, and then the commission, the important thing here is the commission doesn't really have the authority to direct staff, that's ultimately a city manager decision. Next slide, please. Um, this is a little bit about the authority and rules of how procedures work in, um, both for planning commission and council for land use decisions. Um, most of your decisions are gonna be after a notice public hearing, there are some uh, land use matters that don't involve, uh, public hearings, but most, most of them, the staff will send out a notice, 10-day notice, and indicate that, hey, there's gonna be a hearing about this particular land use matter. Commission hears it, and then there's a separate, often a separate notice, not always, uh, after the planning commission makes the decision, and it comes in front of the council for another public hearing. Um, there's a lot, and we're gonna get into a little bit more detail about due process and what's required at a public hearing. Um, some of your decisions are legislative, like general plan amendments, zoning ordinance text amendments, those are legislative, they're not subject to the stricter rules about evidence and people's rights, uh, at the hearing. You get to make decisions based on so-called legislative facts, you don't have to base it on, uh, the evidence that's presented to you at the hearing, whereas other decisions like on the design review and decisions that are about a specific project, a specific piece of property, those are called adjudicatory or quasi-judicial decisions. You have to base your decision on the evidence that's presented at the hearing, and nothing else. Uh, we'll get into that a little bit more detail, so, so those are sort of the key distinctions about land use proceedings, that you don't always, there aren't many city council decisions that are subject to those due process rules. Uh, there's a little bit here about public hearing process flow that you might wanna refer back to at some point in the future, uh, but generally, you wanna open the hearing, hear from staff, hear from the public. Uh, that's your evidence that you're gonna consider, all that material that came in at, at, before closing the public hearing, and you base your decision on that. And so for one example of something that can come up, if a planning commissioner receives evidence outside the hearing, like visiting the site, um, that can be a problem, because you might be basing your decision on evidence that you obtained that the rest of your, uh, decision-makers didn't obtain. Um, that's called quasi, or it's called, uh, ex parte, sorry. Uh, uh, ex parte contact typically, you know, then another way a, an ex parte contact might occur is if you talk to the applicant or a neighbor, and they introduce evidence to you outside of the hearing. That's a, it could be a problem. One way to remedy that problem, though, is to identify it on the record at the proceeding and let everyone else in the, in the room know about it. Um, and then you're all basing your decision on the same evidence.
Yeah, I, I like to speak to ex parte, cause it's very, so the commission, um, it's very common for applicants to reach out to you. I would encourage you all to go to the property, it's, 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 seeing what is being, you know, the property where something's being requested, super important, I request all the staff or direct them all to go visit sites, I mean, we can't do our job without being there, and I would encourage you all to do that. Um, you just have to say, because you're making your decision based on everything you know about it, which includes the context of the property. So at the beginning of the meeting, you would just say, I visited to the site, I visited the site, and if the applicant spoke with you, you could say, and the applicant called me and, and, um, explained X, Y, and Z. Or maybe when you're out there, a neighbor comes up to you and mentions something, that's perfectly fine, but you do need to disclose it in the public setting, so everyone has access to that information.
Correct, and the point is that you, it, it, is that they should, they, everyone should be able to sort of cross-examine that information that you put out there, so that they can get an opportunity to comment on it. Uh, I think Councilmember Rivers had a, had a question first.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask about the, um, like, when we're disclosing that kind of thing, is that before public comments, so the public can comment it on it as well?
Yeah, it should be, usually we have, uh, Cattati doesn't have an agenda item before or a notation, but that is when you should do it, so then, then people can rebut it.
Perfect.
They wish to.
Thank you.
All right, next slide, please. Okay, so general plans, your general plan is your constitution, uh, people talk about the land use pyramid, and the, uh, the general plan is at the top. Everything below it, uh, including permit approvals, all the way down to the bottom to a permit approval, needs to be consistent with the general plan, so that's, when we talk about that constitution, that's what we're talking about. It's got a bunch of requirements, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that later, uh, how many elements are there? Seven elements required by law, many jurisdictions have additional how, uh, elements added to their general plans. Does Cattati have, additional optional elements? Wellness element is what, uh, somebody's whispering in my ear. Next slide, please. Oh, this is your slide.
Correct, yeah, so I just wanna point out, you'll hear the term sphere of influence, and I really wanted to touch on it, cause it, it does have a legal definition, and so you'll see on the slide that there's the dashed, uh, black kinda dash line, that's the city limits. But then all of the color, which are surrounded by a yellow highlight, that's technically the city's sphere of influence. And so, how the law looks at that is, is essentially, it's not under our jurisdiction, but it's kind of, you know, has a Cattati address. So in some cases, we might provide utilities to those properties if they have a failed septic, those types of things. Uh, they also are areas where Roner Park could not annex. Uh, and you'll see, there's kind of a unique part where around Santero, how Roner Park does have jurisdiction in that area. That's kind of a unique situation that, I don't know the timing of that, but, um, the city's sphere of influence was kind of, uh, in a unique situation at that time, that we were able to kind of extend a little finger out into Roner Park, or vice versa, they were able to kind of, uh, annex around that portion of the city. So that's a unique element, so if you look to the south, you'll see Roner Park could not further move west, even though that's not technically under the city's current jurisdiction, that's our sphere of influence, so that will never be, uh, any other jurisdiction other than the county of Sonoma, and those properties are eligible for annexation, subject to a whole litany of other rules, but into the future, basically, it's defining where the city could ultimately grow based on our current view of, kind of known circumstances. Yeah?
Uh, how, legally, how would the sphere of influence get decided?
Yeah, it's, it's a LAFCO process, uh, also based on some general plan analysis. Um, I think LAFCO is the lead in deciding the sphere of influence for a city.
Yeah, so the way it works is the city can, you know, plan whatever it wants outside of its boundaries, it could, you know, designate lands going wherever it wanted to, it's not very, uh, it's just a, it's just sort of a twinkle in your eye that you wanna, you wanted, uh, property to develop outside your boundaries that way. Uh, the only real way to have, uh, to have control over property is to have it annexed to you. And to, to make LAFCO's job, LAFCO's decide boundary matters between cities and, uh, creating special districts, annexations to them, and city incorporations, those are their jobs, it's made up of two members of, from the cities, two members from the board of supervisors, typically, two members from special districts in the county, and then one public member. They decide what the city's sphere of influence is, um, and kind of make a decision as between the city and maybe some other city that might have a, a, uh, you know, want to develop that area. I have no idea what happened with, between Cattati and Roner Park, but that is a strange boundary. Um, I, I was noticing that at one point earlier, uh, since I'd been working here, and I, I don't know why that happened. Probably Cattati was trying to protect the area from development, um, at one point. Um, so ultimately, this sphere of influence itself is a LAFCO determination, but this city gets to decide where it wants to propose to plan something, and, you know, LAFCO can agree or disagree with you.
Can I have a question, um, infrastructure and services, um, is it the city that provides services for that area, or is that?
So.
In the sphere? Go ahead.
It's a county, the county provides services, however, we have the ability to extend our infrastructure to those properties. Um, normally, we would say they should annex if we're gonna provide them services, but in certain circumstances, like a health hazard because someone's septic tank has failed, um, maybe their well is contaminated, cities will do what's called the outside service area agreement. Uh, LAFCO gets involved in that as well, because anything outside of our boundary to the sphere is a LAFCO decision or partially, and so LAFCO is a local agency formation commission, it's a state-appointed body, but, um, we can provide some service to that under certain reasons, but normally, we wouldn't want to without getting the benefit of their tax dollars, essentially.
Yeah, I think generally, I mean, if it's outside the city, the service, there, it's county services. Um, the city's planning for it, like, at some point, you know, the city's general plan probably deals with, you know, what main extensions would be required, and, uh, you know, your mass, your sewer and water master plants might think about that, and how big the pipes would have to be and things like that. Those are all, those are all big decisions that LAFCO is gonna make at some point.
And generally, what I've been told is that when LAFCO does one of those outside agreements, they have them sign off that they will not fight annexation in the future when that happens, and our LAFCO is pretty good about requiring that before they move forward.
It's absolutely correct.
Yeah, so, Ben, did you have a question?
I was wondering if, um, being in our sphere of influence implies anything about county decisions about land use on those parcels, are they required to consult with us, or it's just a matter of courtesy, or?
They're not required to consult with you, there's a mechanism under the LAFCO law that allows a city and a county to agree, to reach an agreement. I have actually never seen one of those, although that was a big, big thing back in the early 2000s, where there, everyone was complaining about the counties building, uh, like, uh, auto deal, auto dealerships right outside the city's boundaries, or a Costco. Um, uh, but yeah, I, I guess cities and counties just can't agree on those kind of fiscal issues, and so that's, it's just, the county's got a general plan, and it's in the county, so that, somebody can develop, present to a county policies if they wish.
I would say it's a professional faux pas not to engage with, uh, another jurisdiction if you're, if, it's in their sphere of influence.
Unless you're building a car, car dealership, and then you steer your thing.
It might be intentional sometimes, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I just heard that for Cattati, when it was incorporated, they were gonna do a, a section of land all the way out to SSU. But they were working on an old set of rules, so when they actually, they had two weeks to apply, Roner Park said it was going to incorporate, Cattati had two weeks in which to do it, and they were using an old set of rules.
Yeah, the rules used to be very lenient about annexation, so that was in the 60s? That, that happened?
That, well, so, so that was gonna be a sliver of land out to SSU, it was too small, so it got disallowed, and I guess
Yeah, there were all kinds of obscure rules and reasons why you might, you know, uh, so, I haven't, I, I've never looked into that, but I understand that they used, cities used to be able to just do it on their own, and if they made a mistake, it could be undone. Uh, so that's probably what happened.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about, um, annexation, like, for example, in that, that top area where the, um, Laguna de Santa Rosa is, um, I went on a walk with two lovely people who talked about putting in a bridge there if it was annexed, um, to go across the river so that we could, you know, have walking trails going all the way out to Sebastopol, and, um, I was just curious, uh, and if this is not the right forum for this, we can talk about it another time, but what the annexation process is?
Uh.
Who's responsible for that?
Well, the, the landowners can, can apply directly if they wish for annexation. The city can also apply for annexation, there are certain things the city has to do, like pre-zone the property and apply to LAFCO, LAFCO probably requires you to pay fees and complete your SEQA. Um, if you just wanted to build a, a bridge somewhere to provide, or, or even build a park outside your boundaries, the city could actually do that, um, under, like Palo Alto has a, has a park that's outside its boundaries. Um, it's, uh, you don't need to, you don't need to annex something to, to, to provide, um, parks and recreation services, so, depending on what you had in mind, I mean, it's possible.
That includes hiking trails, I'm talking about hiking trails, biking, yeah, okay, great.
The city could acquire the, the, there's some other technical reasons why you'd wanna annex it, cause it would otherwise, it would be subject to property taxation if it's outside your boundaries.
Annexation would be the most appropriate from a, from a land use to control it and be in control, but, um, if it's in the sphere of influence, then it is able to be considered for annexation, there's a whole process. Property owners can vote it down.
Yeah.
It's, it's rather, um, time-consuming, and, uh, there's a lot of checks and balances there, but it absolutely could be done, and in this situation, city-initiated annexations are most best planned when you do a general plan update. So you can start to plan, okay, where are we looking to potentially grow in the future, and you can study the needs to provide infrastructure to those areas, et cetera.
Ben, did you have a question? Okay, um, Noah, will you, since there's so many new people, will you, um, speak to the urban growth boundary? Cause that's voter-approved. And I know we did some work to clean that up the last time.
Correct, so the urban growth boundary, I think, is, is the same line as your sphere of influence, uh, and so the city, as of right now, could never grow beyond that highlighted yellow line based on a voter-approved urban growth boundary. I think, as of now, all cities in Sonoma County have urban growth boundaries, um, and generally, it's to prevent sprawl, it's to kinda put checks and balances on some of these development pressures that, you know, municipalities go through to essentially try to find funding a lot of times, or support certain types of projects that they may see as beneficial to their communities, but may kinda take away from some of the, um, community separators that Sonoma County has highly valued, and the voters have put into place some checks to ensure that those are maintained.
Do we have something, um, in the process that addresses when we do, um, expand the city's, uh, boundary that we work with the school district as far as making sure their boundaries are matched? Because I know in, uh, Roner Park, when they expanded their city limits, they did not, uh, consult with the school district, the school district was not, their boundary was not expanded at the same time, and all those developer fees went outside, it did not go to the school district.
That's an excellent comment, and there is nothing that directs the city to do that. Um, it is kind of, it's similar to developing in the sphere of influence, it's, it's a, it would be a professional courtesy to refer that to the school district and take their comments into consideration, and present those to the decision-makers as a part of that process. Um, yeah, so that, it's, there's no, there's no legal requirement, but the call, the policymakers can direct staff to ensure that that happens, uh, if an annexation were being considered.
Typically, the, the school district's boundaries are much broader than the city, so I, I don't know what the situation is here. Um, sometimes you'll see a scenario where, like, I'm aware of many situations, like in Dublin, uh, where I'm the city attorney, there's a big Livermore School District just to the, I guess, east, and, um, the city's general plan says, thou shall detach from, uh, Livermore, uh, School District and, um, and annex to the Dublin. and, and annex to the Dublin School District. So you can include general plan policies that remind developers that they should be taking care of this, but the, the school district boundaries thing is a whole separate issue dealt with by the county superintendent of schools, or, or something like that. So it's just, you just have to remind people to do it. I don't know what happened in, in Ronard Park, but it sounds like there might be a...
It turned into a nasty battle.
Yeah, there might be a, you know, sometimes they have battling school districts, and that can be difficult. Next slide, please, I think. Sorry, sorry, Mayor. I jumped ahead. Okay, so I already kind of touched on general plans here. This slide does a nice job of, of indicating what they are. Let's see. It does say there's a new, there is a new, so there are eight mandatory elements now. There's the environmental justice requirement added. Is that just to one of the elements, or is that a new?
Yeah, it's required if you have a designated disadvantaged community, which Katati does not have, so we are not mandated to have an environmental justice element. However, when we choose to update it, we could get direction from the decision-makers of council to include that, but it's legally required if you have a state-designated disadvantaged community within the boundaries of your jurisdiction.
Yeah, so those, there's a, there's a screening criteria used for determining whether a community's disadvantaged, but it's basically low-income communities and communities of color, and it doesn't have any, it doesn't bear any relationship directly to the environmental nature of what's around those communities, so it's just the fact that they're disadvantaged, and you have to, you have to consider whether things you're adding to their community are environmentally sensitive or not. Usually, air quality issues is where that comes up. Next slide, please.
One quick question. Park and Recreation is all under open space.
Correct.
Where all that sits.
So here's just a little bit about internal, or the consistency required within the general plan. You both have the, you have the, the various elements of the general plan all have to be consistent with one another. That makes staff's job really difficult in drafting these things, because you write, you put a bunch of policies in there, and then you gotta make sure that they're all internally consistent. It creates a lot of difficulty. The, the second-to-last bullet is important. The courts, in looking at these things, just assume, you're good faith, and assume that the general plan policies are valid. But you can have an invalid general plan, and if you have an invalid general plan, or an invalid general plan policy, it can create a lot of problems in terms of approvals that you later make, and they could be jeopardized. That comes up most often in the housing element context, right? If you do not have a valid housing element, lots of bad things could happen, and we're gonna talk about that later.
Okay. The general plan, seven mandatory elements, did we say there was, we have additional ones? What are they? Two additions?
We have a wellness element in the general plan. I'm sorry, I don't have it with me, but we do have a wellness element in the general plan.
So just one.
Yeah, and some, some cities have economic development elements. I can't think of any others, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of cities and counties have additional elements that they add to their general plans. A lot of those things can be worked into your existing seven elements anyway, so it's just a, it's just a matter of emphasis, typically. Next slide, please.
Good question. The elements are validated by the state? Is that correct?
No, the validity is tested only really by the courts. The state does not review elements other than the housing element. The housing element is the one where they certify it, and technically, the courts are the ultimate decider of whether a housing element is valid or not.
So interestingly, you, you've seen what's called the annual production report, the Housing Element APR, where we show you every year how many housing units we've built, and how we're moving to implement the housing element policies and programs, and we have to present that and submit it to the state every April, so we'll be presenting that to the, to the council. Recently, the state has moved where we also have to do that with the entire general plan. And so some, some council members will recall, we played catch-up last year and did 2019, 2020, and 2021, providing a summary of how we were implementing all those general plan policies. We will be bringing another one back to you, because April 1st, both the housing APR and the general plan APRs are now due, and so it just is an example of, you know, additional state mandates that my department, but also just the city in general, has to demonstrate compliance with no additional funding, or no, you know, so it's just more of kind of the, the accountability piece of the state asking us to show how we're meeting these requirements. And it gets, I'm bringing it up because it gets to your point of, the state doesn't certify that you have these seven elements, but now they're starting to do a little bit more, kind of looking over our shoulder to see how we are moving to implement these big plans that we say are our constitution, and so they're just trying to check and balance.
Right, Noah was just responding to the, you know, invalid elements cause issues, so how do we know they're valid? Was where I was going.
You don't really have any certainty about that, other than, you know, your staff or legal opinions. It typically doesn't get challenged, but yeah, if somebody raised a validity issue, you're generally dealing with litigation, and ultimately, a court's gonna decide that.
Neil?
Yeah, so just talking about a favorite subject of mine, circulation, and the circulation, and particularly bringing in more safety. I mean, there's a, there's an element of the state encouraging that, but then it's basically the processes within the city that have a target, or?
Right, I mean, Damon, you're probably more of an expert on this than I am, but any land use approvals have to be consistent with your general plan, right? So the city's policies, transportation policies, could go beyond what the general plan requires and have additional safety requirements, or, you know, anytime you spend money on improving a roadway, you could do complete streets or something like that, whereas your general plan might not even require any of that. Those are kind of two separate, two separate ways of develop, I mean, the land, the general plan is generally about land use approvals, and not so much about what the city does with its roadways.
Yeah, the general plan provides a, generally, like, a 20,000-foot view on it, and then through design standards, and, and also our various plans, you know, improvement plans, like capital improvement plans, bike and ped master plan, those kind of plans, bring out the detail on how they would actually be implemented on a street level.
So it's just the hard work of all the people involved, the council, and having those goals up there, and the discussion that happens about it.
Yeah, so the, the council will be setting sort of the high level, like, these are the policies we want to pursue, you know, complete streets, for example, right? And that's a whole, it's a pretty well-defined, even though it's a broad, broad term, it's pretty well-defined in terms of design standards and things like that, expectations, so, so the council would provide the high-level policy direction, and then through a variety of technical plans, typically, the staff would develop sort of on-the-ground details in how that would work on our circulation networks.
Thank you. Ben?
I was on planning commission when we did the last update, and so we actually have three additional elements beyond the required one. We have the community health and wellness, one called communities services and facilities, and we do have an economic vitality element. I don't remember what's in those, but I know we have them.
So this, this slide here is about, just about consistency, and give us a little bit more detail, but just to give you an idea of the level of detail required, you'll have a circulation element that'll show where all the major roads are. Sometimes you'll approve a, a change in a, in a land use, and it may be more or less intense than was originally anticipated in the general plan, and that may cause downstream or upstream changes. You might have to change where a road is, or how many lanes a road is, because that, that development is more or less intense than was originally planned. So, so when we talk about consistency and horizontal, you just need to make sure all those things are, are, are consistent, and so sometimes you'll see a general plan amendment that'll have a bunch of amendments to graphics and, and figures and tables, and that's why. You're just trying to maintain that consistency across the entire document. Anything else on this slide that you think would be helpful?
I would just add that, in terms of the vertical consistency, so the horizontal's like within the elements, right, in the plan, but the vertical, so after a general plan gets approved, oftentimes, there's a whole nother work effort, trails, to get your ordinances, you know, so, you know, the general plan, right, and then you have your zoning code, and, you know, you're actually, there's a bunch of other stuff that has to then vertically be consistent with what you've now created in the top of the pyramid. So it's, it's not just when you do the general plan, like, you're done, think, you know, we're done for 10 years. It's a whole bunch of other work that needs to happen.
It almost seems like it takes 10 years, then, to get the vertical in line with what you reset at the top.
Well, and the council will, and the commission has seen, a lot of the ordinance work we've been doing recently is essentially playing catch-up on, on the laundry list of tasks that the general plan assigned us. The Falletti Ranch rezoning that we did recently, some of those housing streamlining rezonings, those are all housing element and general plan policies giving us direction to do that. So that's absolutely right.
Next slide, please. So specific plans, specific plans are like, almost like general plans, but they're for a smaller area. They have a lot more, typically have a lot more detail in them. They don't actually have to have that level of detail. There's some additional requirements that they're required to have. They have some really impressive benefits for residential development. If you complete one, there's some SEQA streamlining that's very, very powerful, so development and, and cities often like them, because they just make the development process. If you have a vision for a, for an area, you adopt a specific plan, and it makes, it makes development in that area really smooth and streamlined. Noah, you should probably talk about the two specific plans.
Yeah, so as the council knows, and commission, we have two. We have the downtown specific plan, which was completed in 2009, and we have the Santero Way specific plan, which was completed in 2001. It was interesting hearing John talk about how the benefits that those provide to development, and how it really helps streamline it, and then also the lack of development we've seen in those areas. And so we've been having some internal conversations about, almost like the benefit of a specific plan under the new regime of all the housing law that's being passed, and, and the kind of the constant need to upkeep those plans, because you adopt it at a snapshot in time that's based on a certain reality, and maybe that reality doesn't play out, or, or just there's a lot of factors involved. So we've been trying to, trying to really be thoughtful about our future use of specific plans as compared to rezoning, and, and where we're going in light of all the state housing law changes, because it is a significant amount of upkeep as the state keeps kind of moving the goal line about how you do development in all of these areas. And so it's, it's been an interesting conversation, and definitely will be informing some of the things we bring forward to the council and commission.
Well, Noah, wasn't one of the big benefits to that, that, that whole area, you do the SEQA, which makes it easier for the developers, but as you pointed out with, you have a slide in there somewhere, with the 500 different laws that have gone on there, you know, SEQA seems to have lost some of its glimmer, if you will, than what it was in the early 2000s, when, you know, that was an expensive process for people to have, have those SEQA documents, whereas now they're kind of pushed to the side for a lot of development.
That's exactly right. And then the other thing is just that, you know, the, the Santero Way plan was written when the North Bay was envisioned as a telecom hub, right, and we were gonna have all these telecom office jobs, and so Santero envisions 300,000 square feet of office space built on that cul-de-sac with one entrance in and out, and I just don't, that's not a current reality that anyone wants to see, I don't believe. And so, again, it gets back to the point of, you know, you're making those decisions at this moment in time for a, a uncertain future.
Yeah, I, I'm just, just one comment, which is the SEQA streamlining. It, it really provides two benefits. It, it, it doesn't require you to complete an environmental impact report where it otherwise be required. That's costly for a developer, it's a lot of effort for staff, and a lot of time, six to nine months, generally. The real benefit, though, is that because of the SEQA exemption under the specific plan law, it makes it real hard for opponents of the project that are just bringing environmental claims for other reasons to raise those. So that's, that's why the development community really likes the exemption.
And do you, is it your opinion that those, those benefits remain even in our current?
They, they remain, and they're only for housing, but if the demand's not there, the demand's not there, right? So you might wanna, you might have to go back to the drawing board and find something that, that would meet the community's needs and also have the, the demand from the outside to, for the investment.
And, and that's the challenging, we're seeing, the challenge we're seeing with the downtown specific plan is, there's just so much uncertainty about retail and commercial development right now, but it envisions all mixed use, and so there's a lot of concern on the development side to say, hey, like, if we build all this mixed-use square footage, what retail tenant are we gonna get in there? And then stepping back from that, what bank wants to finance uncertain retail? So that's kind of the challenge, and that's where we had the discussion about trying to come up with commercial incentives to continue to get some mixed use in the downtown in light of all these housing laws, and, and trying to implement the vision that the community spent so much time articulating through the specific plan.
And, sorry, I'll just add one more thing to that, so, in Noah's earlier comment about reevaluating kind of where we're going, moving forward, another factor, of course, is the Santero Way specific plan is right next to a train station, which, under current law, is considered a major transit hub, which just by itself creates a lot of SEQA exemptions. So a lot of what, you know, what John said, that is traditional means, traditional reasons for having a specific plan, a lot of those specifically in that specific plan are maybe less meaningful than they were, you know, 20 years ago when the plan was adopted, so.
I just keep hearing, you know, trying to avoid SEQA and not having to do an environmental impact report, and it, that just makes me really uncomfortable, and I just want to confirm that the reason it's avoided is because there's already an environmental impact report as a part of the specific plan, that's right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, sorry, we, we just talk that way, because, because we live it, you know, it's, but we're not avoiding anything. There's an existing environmental document with mitigation measures into it, and as long as a project's consistent with that, it, it doesn't require additional environmental review. And SEQA has a lot of tiering, and in fact, the law presumes that prior environmental review is valid, but the law is also incredibly uncertain and has a lot of avenues for project opponents to challenge the validity of your environmental review, whether it be an exemption or mitigated neglect. So anyway, I've seen a lot of interesting SEQA lawsuits over the years, so sorry, sorry for my, I'm probably giving you a slight bit of negativity about that, and I didn't intend to do that.
No, it's all good. Thank you for clarifying.
But it's also true that a lot of the new laws do give SEQA exemptions, not in these specific areas, but just more broadly in general.
Yeah, for example, SB 35 makes certain types of projects ministerial, and ministerial projects are exempt from SEQA, so, and, and there are various SEQA exemptions that have been added for certain types of residential projects. But the, the specific plan exemption that's into law is from the 80s, and there was a housing crisis in the 80s as well, and that's why it exists, because the developers, you know, that, that was a different time and place, but the developers got legislation passed that made it easier, and it's really designed for bigger subdivisions in greenfield areas, but it, it, it just, it creates a real streamlined process for getting development approved, housing development, residential development. You're welcome. Next slide, please. So zoning, we talk sometimes about zoning and general plan designations as being one and the same, but they're really different. Usually, you have at the high level in the general plan, a little bit of detail about densities and what types of uses are allowed, and then the city also has zoning, and you map your, your city and identify the rules that are applied to certain zoning districts, and you can see, how many zoning districts do you have? It looks like you have about 15 or more. That's typical of a small city like Katati. So you might have a general plan policy that says low-density residential, and within that general plan designation, you might have one or two zoning districts that are consistent with that. One might have a little bit higher density allowed within that range, and the other one might be a little smaller. So you get into a higher level of detail in the zoning, and then you also have things like development standards, like setback... like development standards, like setbacks, uh, height limits, sometimes those are in the general plan. Uh, what else? Parking standards, what else?
Every element you could imagine, height, block coverage, density, setbacks, um, we've adopted...
Sorry. We've adopted all of our objective design criteria live in the zoning code now, uh, the land use tables, so all the enumerated uses that are allowed in each of those districts. Uh, and one of my favorite areas of the zoning code is the purpose of the district. So if I get a land use that, that somebody comes in, wants to start a certain business, and it's not listed, I go back to the purpose of that district, and it kind of tells me, like, why are we putting this type of, um, designation on these properties? And what's the goal of that district? Uh, I really, you'll see me reference that, I put it in staff reports a lot.
Yeah, I, one thing I didn't mention is, is use is incredibly important, right? I mean, in the general plan, it'll say, like, general commercial, this includes retail and, uh, you know, services. But then in the zoning code, it'll get an incredible level of detail, uh, sometimes obscene levels of detail about what types of uses are allowed, haircutters and, uh, you know, auto body, and it, it gets into a lot of detail. So you'll find that in the zoning regulations, and, and sometimes you'll have a, a, a commercial zone that's maybe light industrial or heavy industrial, and it'll distinguish between the types of uses. That's the primary way zoning regulates. Any questions about that?
Just a quick one about the interaction of the zoning code and specific plans. Does the zoning code just say, refer to specific plan, or does it have an underlying zoning? Because I've been told, like, the downtown specific plan doesn't have a density, uh, by parcel requirement, but if there's an underlying zoning, does that still apply?
So it does have an underlying zoning, uh, underlying zoning, and it actually breaks it up into four zoning districts, but the specific plan is very unique in how density is, uh, identified and calculated, and it's pie each district, it's not a parcel-specific basis. And one of the discussions we had on the study session on the specific plan amendments is to try to take that kind of district-wide density and distill it into a parcel-specific to meet the state's formulas for density bonus.
No, I understand that, but the question is about the underlying zoning does have a density, so why doesn't that apply?
So it's a specific plan, specific zoning, right? There's, those zoning districts aren't anywhere else, there's not...
That's correct. They only, yeah, they, they live in this...
I see.
Yeah, they implement the specific plan land use designation, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's very, very typical. When you have a unique, specific plan, often you'll have to adopt a unique zoning district for them. Yeah, and you can't use a sort of citywide zoning districts. So this is just a little bit about the process for adopting zoning. Uh, this is where the distinction between the planning commission and the, and the city council becomes apparent. Um, the, uh, oh, and we also want to make a distinction between the two types of zoning ordinances that you'll see. Uh, so the process for enactment, as you both have to hold a public hearing, the council has to ultimately adopt it, the planning commission makes a recommendation. The two types of zoning ordinances, one is when you're changing the, the zoning of a property, say, from residential to industrial. Um, that's a reclassification or, uh, zoning map amendment. That's, uh, different from a text amendment. Say, let's say, a text amendment might be when you change the parking standard from, uh, two spaces per unit to one and a half, uh, spaces per unit. That would be a text amendment. You're just changing the requirements, the text of the zoning ordinance. Uh, anything else on that?
No, then just a link to the map, just to provide as a reference.
Okay, thanks. Next slide, please. Uh, oh, this is fun. Initiative and referendum. Um, this always gets you when you, when you, when you approve a project and there's a little bit of controversy, and then you get a referendum petition. Um, so, you know, all power in California is basically reserved, or legislative power anyway, is reserved to the voters in your community. And so there are two basic ways, in addition to the, the recall powers, I, I won't talk about that, um, where the, the voters can participate in the legislative process. The initiative is when the, the, the voters do that on their own initiative. They do it on their own, they go out and get signatures, and they, and they propose legislation. Um, uh, they can propose a general plan, uh, change. Uh, so they go out and gather signatures and produce a, a, an amendment to the general plan. Um, so, has that, has that happened here?
Roundabout.
Oh, okay.
They're illegal here. Don't even use that word, or any form of it.
Well, you could put it, you could put it on an initiative, fix that, I guess. Um, so, um...
Actually, how is that addressed? If, if there was a desire to make them legal again, how would that happen?
So, I was gonna mention this earlier, when, when Noah was talking about the urban growth boundary. That was adopted by the voters. It can also be repealed by the voters, altered by the voters, so, uh, it's not set in stone, it just has to go back to the voters to, for them to make decision. How could that be proposed? Two ways. One, the voters could do it directly with a petition. Um, it comes back to the council, and the council decides what to do with it, whether to put it on the ballot, or there's actually a process for the council to adopt an initiative that's brought to it. Um, I don't believe you could do that, though, if it was previously adopted by the voters, you'd have to put it on the ballot. Um, and then the other way for an initiative to go on the ballot is for the council to adopt it, to place it on the ballot, just directly on, on the council's own initiative. So that's the basic initiative process. The referendum process is when you, um, when the council takes an action, approves a legislative act, like a zoning ordinance amendment, or a general plan amendment, or you're just adopting the general plan, the voters can go out and gather signatures to have that decision, uh, questioned. And if they gather enough signatures, uh, comes back to the council, the council's actions at that point are to repeal it, can undo the action in response to the petition, or put it on the ballot. Uh, so that's, that's the general plan, and, um, I'm sorry, the initiative and referendum process. One thing to note here is, SEQA does not apply to things that are on the ballot. Uh, the voters aren't subject to SEQA, basically. Um, but I can't remember, council-sponsored measures are subject to SEQA. There's some, uh, there's been some back and forth on the law about that. Anyway, I thought I saw a question, sorry.
Yeah, just, how many signatures are required for petitions?
Um, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a percentage of, like, the number of registered voters in the last election, and then...
Yeah.
In Cattati, it's like in the order of 300 or so, I think, to get something on the ballot.
For initiative? Oh, wow.
So it's basically an afternoon in front of all of us.
And the, the referendum, uh, requirement is a little higher. It's not, it's not as low as the initiative. Um, so, uh, but we, we can get you that information. We should probably put that on the slide, uh, for the next time.
So the difference between initiative and referendum is who brings it forward?
Well, a referendum is very distinct. It's only, it, it occurs after the council takes an action.
Okay, so it's against an action.
Right? It's an opportunity for the voters to sort of appeal what, uh, what the council has done.
Okay, so council-sponsored, so for example, if a citizen were to come forward with the roundabout repeal, um, would that, and we said yes, we agree with that, that makes it council-sponsored, like, what makes it council-sponsored?
Yeah, okay, that's, uh, so, so this citizen, right, this smart person, uh, they get the thing drafted up, and they, they got their initiative, it's ready to go, it's consistent with the general plan, and, um, they've got two options. One is they can go out and gather signatures. They gotta go send it to the city clerk and go through a process, but they can go get, they can go get, gather signatures. If they have enough signatures, then they take it back to the city clerk, and the clerk sends it over to the registrar voters, and he can't, uh, he or she counts them, then it comes back, and then it goes to the council, and the council decides whether to put it on the ballot. So that's one process. The easier way, though, is just say, hey, council, this is a great idea, why don't you just put it on the ballot? And then the council puts it on the ballot directly. That's a council-sponsored initiative. Usually, though, council-sponsored initiatives come about because the council member, or the council, or the manager decides that's a great idea, let's just have the council put it on the ballot. Does that make sense?
In, in the petition-initiated initiative, you just said that, that it, after the signatures are gathered, it comes to council, and council decides whether to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, because the council can adopt it.
Well, but not if it's repealing a voter-approved initiative.
Yeah, I don't believe you can do that. I, I've never actually researched that, but I, I can't imagine you'd be able to do that.
So the, the only council action at that point, if the, if the initiative was to repeal a previous voter initiative, would be to endorse or not, but it's going on the ballot, whether or not...
Right, it goes on the ballot, I think you have a decision about which ballot it goes on, but, uh, yeah, you're, really, your only decision is, is what ballot, to put it on, and whether to endorse it or not, but that's a...
So really, sponsored is, we really mean initiated, not supported, correct?
Council-initiated, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, we usually say council-sponsored, but you're right, council-initiated is a better, better phrasing.
There is a, there is a, I mean, not to make this more confusing, but there's a little bit of a nuance when, like, if, if a voter or a citizen initiative came to council to, on the step that John was talking about, like, to place it on the ballot. Um, I think the council can also elect to, um, have it studied, its impact studied.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and that could be sort of a, you know, to, uh, to, to wait to put it on the ballot until that study is complete, and then bring it back, but, but that's my understanding. If it was a vote, if it was a, um, part of our municipal code or ordinance that was voter-approved, the council can't do it, it has to only be done by the voters. So it ultimately has to go to the voters, so it's kind of a perfunctory process in that situation.
So to be clear, if, if I want to get that, uh, roundabout repealed, I cannot, as a planning commissioner, go out and get signatures? And can the council, can a council member go out and get signatures? I, I believe that I'm exempt, is that correct?
Uh, well, I mean, you, you could participate in a campaign to, uh, gather signatures. You'd be doing something that, um, is outside the subject-manner jurisdiction of the city council, so, uh, as a private citizen, you, you can do that.
Oh.
Yeah.
And then we could still vote on it if, if we participate in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are we...
Sounds like you guys are scheming here.
I'm just curious, it sounds like...
No, we're, this is all...
Just wanted to be clear. So, but there's this council-sponsored or initiated measure which doesn't even require signatures, right?
Correct.
So a council member maybe wouldn't have a lot of motivation to go around getting signatures.
Right, unless they only had two votes for their idea.
And, and it requires SEQA. So it's a, it's, then it becomes essentially a, a general plan amendment or some, some count, like, just like any other ordinance that's brought through the process.
Which, if the, if it's council-initiated, it requires SEQA?
Correct.
But if it's petition-initiated, it doesn't?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what the SEQA would look like on the, uh, repeal of the ban on, um, roundabouts, but that's an interesting one.
So it gets back to the potential threat of litigation, right? Because then your SEQA determination could be challenged, so, it's just kind of a...
Yeah, I mean, typically, if you think you have, you think it's a popular measure, uh, and you can get the signatures, you're gonna go get the signatures. It's powerful, right? You have all those signatures, and you get, you get all the, um, the, um, sort of free publicity associated with it going to the council. So, you know, when people think they're gonna get a ballot measure passed, that's how they'll do it.
Yes, well, it's fun.
Okay, I guess, next slide. So, yeah, sorry about the jokes, but I can't, I can't help myself sometimes. Um, so administrative relief and zoning, right? Uh, zoning ordinances tend to be very prescriptive and prohibit a lot of things, and, and they can't deal with every piece of property in every situation, so they, there are sort of these little escape valves, um, use permits, variances, um, and, uh, those are quasi-judicial proceedings, where the council or the planning commission, are all these heard by the planning commission in the first instance, or are they...
Those, all those lists are correct.
Yeah, use permits, variances, those are decisions about a particular piece of property, applying the, the generally applicable rules, those are subject to all the due process requirements. We started talking about earlier, and we're gonna talk a little, a little bit, uh, about later, they run with the land. What that means is, they're not personal to the person up there, the property owner at that point in time, asking for it. If that person dies or sells the property, the new owner of that, uh, gets to take advantage of that, um, use permit variance. Um, that's not always the case, but you can generally assume that's the case. Uh, what's that last slide say?
Property right.
Oh, that is a property right, that's the same thing, is it running with the land. Um, okay, next slide.
Can, can I just check, this is just approved, this is approved by the planning commission, the council does not have to weigh in on this, correct?
Correct. Can we go back once, one slide, please? Um, these, uh, use permits and variances are, uh, they stop at the planning commission unless they're appealed, so you, you could end up having one if somebody appealed it. Okay, next slide. Uh, okay, so this is, this is a little bit about due process. Um, what, we started talking about this earlier, um, you know, uh, the applicant has a notice and opportunity to be heard, but also neighbors and participants of all types get, uh, notice, and they get an opportunity to be heard. Not everyone gets notice, but the, the neighbors, as defined by state law, uh, get notices. Um, the, the planning commission and the city council can establish reasonable time limits for, uh, testimony. Um, I think both bodies have done that. Sometimes, uh, you know, you can, you can even on the fly, uh, restrict the amount of time, uh, if, if there's a, a big crowd, you know, you might change the rules to be two minutes per person rather than three minutes, because otherwise you'd be there all night, so you can do that, most jurisdictions don't. Uh, there's not any formal rules of evidence, but, but you have to have some reasonable rules sort of established, and don't, don't make up, you know, it can't be a kangaroo court. You can't make up the rules, you have to just come up with a reasonable hearing procedure to follow. Um, you know, people don't have the right to cross-examine witnesses or anything like that.
Does that have to be in advance, John?
The, the rules?
Do they have to be laid out in policy?
Typically, you would wanna have some rules of the road that we have...
So the commission bylaws, uh, outline the process for which the commission hears things, and I imagine the council is similar.
Yeah, for public hearings, the council has also, and the city council rules.
Okay.
A basic framework, yeah.
To John's point, I heard some cities where they say, you know, they've kind of changed midstream and say, okay, we're gonna allow one minute per person, and we're only gonna hear this for 30 minutes, and that's it. And that just seems sort of...
Yeah, the first part, I think, is legitimate. If you had 300 people here, you just, you couldn't do your business by giving them all three minutes, but the second part, and we're gonna limit the overall, that, I don't...
You can do that in the Brown Act, but you can't do that in a quasi-judicial hearing. You need to give everyone the opportunity to speak, so if you don't have time, you just gotta continue the hearing.
You gotta continue, okay, that, that was my thought, but, okay, thanks.
Okay, so we talked about ex parte contacts, uh-oh, I skipped over, your decision-making has to be unbiased and impartial, right? If you hate the applicant, you need to recuse yourself, right? You cannot, you cannot be biased, um, you can't prejudge your decision, you have to have an open mind. Nobody's gonna ask you that, but if you are, if an applicant knows you hate them, they're gonna tell you, I know you hate me, you can't participate in this decision, you know, you don't wanna be in that position.
And, and the opposite, too, right? If it's like your spouse, you have to recu, recuse yourself, correct, right?
Yeah, you're not biased there either. I mean, you're not unbiased there either.
Well, and that, the fact that these, the, I'm not sure if everything on this, that this page applies to, uh, is similar to the previous, but the, the judicial, quasi-judicial stuff that runs with the land, um, we often get applicants who come in and tell us all about what great people they are, and how great they treat their employees, and all this stuff that is personal to their business and their business plan, and since these are decisions that run with the land, I, I always feel like that's irrelevant, that's, they could sell it tomorrow to, as somebody who runs a really sleazy business, you know, something like that.
That's correct, and that's why we, we really, um, try to get conditions right. So if the council has certain things that they think are very critical, or the commission are very critical to that decision point, the condition language, that's why we spend so much time with you, to make, because that condition also transfers. So then that's how you can look into the future 10 years down the road, when a different operator is running that business, um, they're still subject to those conditions.
So as an example of that, when I've seen conditions where we say we would, um, like, preference to Cattati citizens as employees first?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, yeah, especially with the cannabis businesses, that's correct.
Yeah, we've set, you know, if, that's our preference as a condition.
So we talked already about, um, ex parte contacts, um, those are, a lot of these rules come from the federal constitution, the due process clause of the federal constitution, so these property owners have due process rights. property owners have due process rights to have these decisions made in a fair and impartial way. Yeah, I don't have anything else to say about this, it says here, must follow rules of decorum, listen and pay attention, those aren't due process rules, those are just like good governance rules that I think the city council expects.
There has been some decisions that were invalidated because of the behavior of the council or the commission while they were, I mean, basically they, they demonstrated that they were not impartial because of the way they treated the applicants, and so it's just important to...
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, we're talking about like in different cities in the state.
Yeah, the city of Los Angeles.
Absolutely, just in case anyone wasn't clear on that, it wasn't in a direct experience, but it, it's, it's not unheard of.
Yeah, well, a lot of these rules that came about are because the, the city council in, in the city of Los Angeles just wanders around in the back, talking to lobbyists, and, so, yeah, we get a lot of these rules because of them.
We saw one of those cities that Cal City's dysfunction junction.
Yeah, next slide please.
Can I just, I'd like to make a quick edit note, the he who decides, can we change that to we, or they?
Please, thank you.
One who decides.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm certain that's from the case law though, he who decides, it goes back a long time, but, yeah...
Well, then quotation marks then, if it's needed, thank you.
Okay, so, so a big topic, and Noah might be a little better on this than I am, a big topic in, in land use is subdivisions, and it is two basic forms of subdivision, subdividing land into lots, right? And the state has regulated that for a long time, and every state does, because they're trying to protect the buyers of property, you know, ensuring that they have roads and pipes and electricity and all those things, so those are highly regulated areas under state law. The council and the planning commission have a role in that, really about how a subdivision is designed, you have a lot of decision-making power along that. In Katati, the council makes final decisions on all subdivisions and the planning commission is the advisory body. Parcel maps get final by the planning commission or the council too? Well, that's kind of rare, parcel maps are under five. Yeah, next slide please.
Noah, what about with the new laws on subdivisions on single-family lots, where now you can subdivide and basically, you know, your point of having infrastructure there, now you can have four units, if you will, on what was a single-family spot.
Correct, so there's this, we'll touch on that, but yes, so right now there's a law that allows every, well, essentially, it allows a majority of property owners in California to split their lots, and then you could essentially, so if you had a 10,000 square foot parcel, you could create two 5,000 square foot parcels, each of them have development rights to build a single-family home and an ADU, and, and that's ministerial, meaning it does not come to the council, it does not come to any public hearing, no public process, and to the mayor's point, I think there's, there, some of these laws do not, and they don't create a mechanism that cities typically use to study the infrastructure impacts associated with that. They would have to run a separate sewer line and a separate water line, but imagine if every parcel in Katati did that, we would have issues with capacity and all the trunk lines of the sewers to manage those, and these laws do not speak to that. But I do believe there would be some mechanism through the overall health and safety regulations that we talked about at the very beginning, but my perception is that it's essentially unsettled law as to how and when those issues would be dealt with, given that the legislature has essentially codified this right, without the requisite studies to know what the real impacts are.
Yeah, and it gets even more complicated on lots that don't necessarily have services, and then you could be creating a situation where they now need city services because they can't put in four septic systems, they can't put in four wells, so...
So, but, so that, that is some of the, the issues that the city attorney's getting to in, in this, well, this slide doesn't really touch to it, but you'll see when we do subdivisions, it's, it's a, it's very critical that the city ensures that it can be served by the public services, and we do not allow those new lots to be created until we ensure that those services are there, and so count or commission doesn't see this, but the council sees those public improvement agreements, they ride with subdivisions, there are a whole separate agreement with the developer to build all the infrastructure, and I've told people, in California, developers tend to build a majority of the infrastructure, because they do the new, the housing units, the new commercial, and we ensure that they provide all the services to provide, to serve those properties as kind of a, a condition of granting the new subdivision or the new construction of those units.
And this is regulated through permitting, is that how that works?
Correct.
Okay.
The improvements?
No, the subdivision of a particular parcel.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they need a, they need a tentative map or a parcel map, and then there's, at the end of the, so we, we condition the tentative map to comply with various requirements and maybe even some specific conditions that we impose, then they bring it back to us in a final form that can be recorded, actually creating the lots, dedicating all the roads to the city or to the, if there was a special district, dedicating the pipes to the special district, and, and when they finalize that map, they agree to complete all the infrastructure, post a bond to ensure that happens, all of which is designed that to, so that you don't end up with somebody buying a lot that doesn't have public services that they need. What else to say here? Oh, one thing I wanted to mention is, I was talking about the two types of subdivision, there's, there's a lot creation subdivision, but you can also have condos, airspace maps, where, you know, if you had an eight-story building, there might be condos within that building and, and they're just, they consist of the airspace, so that's another way to create a, a subdivision is through creating airspace, lots, parcels, they're not really lots, they are separate pieces of property in the form of airspace and the improvements that were constructed. Anything else about subdivisions? There's, there's a bunch of other little narrow things like lot line adjustments and lot mergers that staff typically deals with as well.
And you'll hear us use the terminology a tentative map, which is five or fewer, five or more parcels, or a parcel map, which is four or fewer lots, so just know, that's the distinction, so it's, some people would call it a major subdivision or a minor subdivision, but, so that's just a vocabulary word, and then, yeah, at the staff level, we approve lot line adjustments, you can merge two parcels together and that's a staff level decision, there's not really discretion behind it. Occasionally, the commission or council will see those, because Katati's rules say if, say you want a lot line adjustment and a design review and a subdivision, the lot line adjustment would normally be decided by staff, the design review would normally be decided by the commission, but the council does the subdivision, Katati's rules bundle them all together in one project that ultimately gets decided by the city council with recommendations from staff and the commission, so you will occasionally see those.
And tentative maps are, are much more highly regulated than parcel maps, parcel maps are designed to just be a, more of a simple process, although city, cities have jurisdiction to, to make them a little bit more strict than state law requires, so I don't know how, how highly regulated they are here, but I, I would imagine they're fairly well regulated. So with that, I'm done for now, and I'm ready to turn it over to Noah to talk about his favorite topic.
So we'll go to the next slide, CEQA, so this is getting into some of the questions we've had, you know, just, this book alone is all CEQA, so like, you know, we, there's, there's a lot there, so I'll try to highlight it, but this is the California Environmental Quality Act, the national level is the NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, so those are synonymous, both created in 1970, it's our broadest environmental law, and it helps guide the city during issuing permits and approval of projects, so as a city or a government, everything we do, we have to make a call on CEQA, we, every decision, so every resolution you see has a CEQA determination in it, we are what's called the lead agency in CEQA decision-making process, whereas like, so say we initiated a annexation and then we submitted it to LAFCO, we would give them our environmental study as the lead agency, and then LAFCO would use that as a responsible agency to agree or disagree with us, and it applies to all discretionary projects that we do as a city, so certain things are called discretionary, so there's discretion, those are generally planning permits, certain things are called ministerial, those mean there's no discretion, if you do A, B, and C, we're required to give you that permit, that's a building permit, so, and lot line adjustments are similarly ministerial, but you'll use, you'll hear those terms discretionary and ministerial, ministerial, we have to give it to you if you demonstrate compliance, discretionary, we have some discretion as to yes or no. And we'll go to the next slide?
Wait.
Yeah, oh, sorry, yeah.
I want to appreciate Susan and Laura for dressing as tiger salamanders today.
That's right, that's right. So a big part of CEQA is also just transparency, so the goal is just to disclose to the public and the decision-makers the impacts of a decision that's being made. There's a lot of terminology, a ton of vocabulary, and I apologize, but an initial study is the first step to analyzing a project's potential to have impacts, you know, when I was, my old supervisor used to talk about doing them in an afternoon in their office, now it's closer to 80 hours of work, with significant studies by consultants, they're, they've become kind of their own cottage industry, and you'll see, staff doesn't prepare a lot of our CEQA documents just because of the amount of time and effort, but that's why we use consultants, unfortunately that has added cost over the years. What, the result of an initial study is typically gonna be either a negative declaration, which says we looked at all of these potential areas of impact and there's no potential to impact the environment, or a mitigated negative declaration, which says we looked at all these areas, if we put these mitigation measures in place, then they will reduce those impacts to being less than significant, so then we're still okay, or an environmental impact report, which says, hey, we really need additional analysis to understand these potential impacts, and an EIR, just, you know, it's $100,000 to $200,000 easily and close to a year of time. A lot of that process is added public engagement and just mandatory noticing and comment periods, and so, again, it gets back to the purpose of transparency, public engagement in the environmental elements of decision-making. The whole goal is obviously to prevent or minimize damage to the environment, you'll often, when you get to an EIR level, you'll study alternatives to the project, so a developer proposes a hundred units on a sub, of a subdivision, that maybe in a wetland area, if you avoided it, you could build 80 units and have significantly less environmental impacts, that would get studied and that would be presented. We would talk about those mitigation measures, and then at the end, if that's adopted, there's what's called a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that basically is a document that tells everybody who's responsible to make sure those things happen, those mitigation measures, who's responsible when it happens and the process to check it off, we're doing that right now for the hotel, as they get ready to look at construction, we're looking at grading impacts and making sure they do noticing, those types of things, they get their water board permits, all of that. Again, it's, I talked about CEQA, a big part of it's codified, that it's to enhance public participation in the whole process, and then, it also is to improve inter-agency coordination, and so when we write one of these documents, we submit it to the state, so not only do we refer it to the, the project to the Fish and Wildlife Department, Caltrans, Smart Station, you know, all these agencies at different levels, but we also refer it to the state, it's called the State Clearing House, and then they also double-check that all of those responsible agencies have seen that document, that they have a certain period of time to comment on it, and they keep track of those comments.
So, question?
Yeah.
So, so in the original intent of CEQA to explain the thinking, there was also this, I'm surprised to find, the whole thing of level of service for junctions, so within the impact of a project, there was this level of service analysis, which actually forced sometimes larger junctions.
Intersections, that's correct, absolutely, yeah.
Intersections and things, so, so, I mean, what does the state now, where it's, that requirement at CEQA has been taken out to look at the level of service of a junction, how crowded is that junction, but more looking at the vehicle miles traveled, so what in CEQA is there now that's forcing us to build bigger roads, is really what my question is, but I want to phrase it.
Yeah, no, I understand, so...
What is the traffic ability analysis?
Yeah, so Commissioner Hancock is pointing out that part of the, the old CEQA analysis, congestion, traffic congestion was called an environmental impact under the, what's called level of service analysis, so what you would grade intersections, A through D or F, F is failing, and then you would establish a significance criteria that would say, if an intersection gets to level of service D, then we need mitigation to make that intersection function better. The state has moved away, through CEQA, has moved away from saying congestion is a, is an environmental impact, because the state says, we, we don't care if, if it's congested intersection, what we care about is how many miles does somebody have to drive in their car to get to your new use that you're opening, so that's called vehicle miles traveled. So, you know, as a part of our recognition of greenhouse gas impacts, they, the state has said, it's not congestion that's driving that impact, it's how many miles we drive that then contribute to greenhouse gas in the atmosphere and then the impacts that are associated with that. To your question though, Commissioner Hancock, I'm not sure how VMT analysis, vehicle miles traveled, would trigger the need for more traffic improvements to be made, but I will say, while the environmental impacts don't look to level of service anymore, we all care about how well our streets function, and so we still require level of service studies as a part of our traffic studies, to make sure that our intersections aren't gonna be failing and that they're gonna function, and they now have to be analyzed to function for all levels of transportation, so automobiles, bicycles, and pedestrians.
So, I could just bring up, right?
That's correct, it's, but it's in our general plan, our general plan talks about it.
So, so if I could bring up that 2019 CEQA study on the far side of Katati, where we said, yes, there's bicycle paths that are capable, that in the general plan for crossing Highway 6116, but when it came down to the actual analysis of the junction, we didn't put anything in because there wasn't any funding, so the CEQA said, hey, our general, our bicycle plan and our general plan says, yes, we should have a safe crossing on Highway 116, made it visible, but then when it actually came down to that decision, there was like, no, it's too dangerous for people to cross 116.
Yes, so in that situation, so there was a, I think this is the development at Alder and 116, right, that's currently built, so, right now, so this is a good point to make, so even if we have a plan that says we need a pedestrian path or even a, a crosswalk at a location, if that crosswalk is going to end in a place where there's no other pedestrian amenities, so a sidewalk, part of the law says that any public infrastructure we build, sidewalks, crosswalks, those things have to be ADA compliant, so what we cannot do is require a crosswalk across, in this case it was Highway 116, that doesn't have a signalized intersection, or land at a, a other pedestrian-oriented infrastructure that would allow that person a safe place to go somewhere, that's also ADA compliant, and we didn't have what's called the nexus, so the legal ability to look at a developer's project and say, this project is, is now triggering the need for you to make all these improvements. Bottom line, we can't make a developer of Project A build a, a 10-mile sidewalk to get it to City Hall, right? There's no nexus to say, your project is creating an impact for that need, so that need associated with the project is a big deal in what the city can ask or make a developer put in as a part of their infrastructure improvements.
Can we ask, can we ask for it in front of their project?
Yes.
So you'd get a piece?
That's exactly how we get it, and it gets back to my point, developers tend to build infrastructure, so if we're gonna allow an empty lot to develop, one of the things we talked about, like the subdivision, we will make them put in curb gutter and sidewalk, if we have standards that say bike lanes, we will make them put in bike lanes, but we can't say, you know, in the middle of that neighborhood, four blocks away, there's a sidewalk gap that we need fixed, that we recognize that, unless there's a demonstrated connection between whatever they're doing on their property and the need for them to pay for that, so it gets a little bit case by case, and it does result in piecemeal infrastructure, but then that gets to where we have to have a plan that shows all the areas where we've identified are needed improvements, and then as these projects come in, we can tie their impacts to those needed improvements, or we address them through a capital improvement project, big picture, where the city is doing something like upgrading the sewer infrastructure, or the council will see later where we're, we... something like upgrading the sewer infrastructure, or the council will see later, where we have our sidewalk gap analysis for areas where we've looked around town and found gaps that we know we need to fund, but they're in front of an existing home that's not likely to do any intensive development to get a new sidewalk piece put there.
So SEQA made it visible, but then we weren't able, we didn't, weren't able to access traffic impact fees to be able to, I mean, to be able to solve that problem, I think.
Yes, it's a lot of nuance, but yes. So we'll go to the next slide. So it lives in the Public Resource Code, there's a lot of actual written regulations about SEQA. There's also a ton of court decisions. So a lot of the laws on land use are kind of living, and they evolve all the time, partially because of courts, just like we see with the Supreme Court. There's California courts that interpret these regulations, they change them often. And then the legislature, in the meantime, is also churning out a lot of regulations that affect all of these things. So it's kind of a living process, and I don't know what you want to add?
The legislature doesn't change SEQA that often. It's kind of a third rail for the legislature to, to make changes to SEQA. A lot of the action is on the SEQA guidelines. When the change was made to eliminate level of service, that was done through the guidelines as state policy matter, not by the legislature. Occasionally, there will be a court decision that is perceived to be so egregious that the legislature will take action.
The Berkeley Housing one is a good one.
Yeah, there was the one a year ago, I think, where basically that, one of the court decisions prevented Berkeley from going forward with student housing, and, and the legislature didn't like that. And, and created an exemption for student housing. So, so now it's a lot easier for student housing to be, for the universities to build it, public universities to build it. But there, there was a recent court decision out of Berkeley as well about noise from student housing that's caused a lot of controversy. And I've heard some people saying, oh, we need to have the legislature do something about it, but I don't think anything's.
Well, and it's interesting, because historically, if we're, I'm analyzing a subdivision or a new apartment project, residential uses are not noise generators. Like, if you typically do a noise study, a residential use is not going to have a significant noise impact, because it's all anticipated that we all live together, we live in neighborhoods, and my level of noise is generally, you know, consistent. So my whole career, a residential use is deemed to not be a significant contributor to noise. So it's, I read that case, and I thought it was interesting.
Yeah, but that, that was about, you know, student parties and stuff. And those are definitely loud, but I think the controversy is that, well, should that really be an environmental impact? I mean, it seems a little.
And if they're consistent with the city's adopted noise ordinance, that's already said, here's what the impacts are, and this gets, this is a good segue. So thresholds of significance, you can't see it on the slide because of the closed captioning, but at the bottom, federal, state, and city regulations adopt what's called a threshold of significance. So with regards to noise, we went out and held a microphone outside in Cattati in different parts for a week, and it established this baseline amount of noise. And then we've said, okay, a spike of 10 decibels above that is not a significant impact. And so that is considered now the threshold of significance, and we analyze environmental impacts of projects against that threshold to determine how we know whether something's noise impact or not.
When did we do that?
I'd have to look, but we did the general plan in 2015. It would not surprise me if we did not touch our noise ordinance at that time, because it can create a lot of strong and varied opinions, and it's a complicated issue for decision makers to address.
And you mentioned a spike, but what if it's prolonged?
Well, so that's, so that's exactly right. So, I mean, we could talk about this for a long, and these are very, these environmental studies are very nuanced, and there's specialists that do these. But basically, what you do, you literally put microphones around, establishing the baseline amount of noise in different parts of your city, oftentimes based on the zoning districts. So out on the far west side of town, it's going to be different than right at La Plaza Park, right? And then based on your zoning, you have a different baseline. So areas that have a lot of higher, higher concentration of more dense housing, typically the baseline's a little higher, because there's more vehicular trips coming and going, there's more people opening and closing their doors, more people starting their cars, mowing their lawns, whatever it is, that elevates the level of environmental noise. So your baseline's a little higher in parts of town over others. And then there's a lot of studies about literally the effects of noise on human beings and brain activity, all these things. And then you use that to establish your thresholds of significance. And you use that to analyze your impacts under SEQA under that. There's a lot to some of these things. As a planner, we get the studies from the professionals, we read them, and then they're based on all these other studies about how that impacts human behavior and, and our ability to live together with each other and all those things. We'll go to the next slide. So where does SEQA apply? All government actions need a SEQA determination. So that's why you'll see it in your resolutions, there's always a SEQA finding to that. So undertaken by a public agency, funded by a public agency, private activity, so a business activity that needs discretionary permits, not a building permit to, and sell a water heater, but a design review to build a new building or replace their whole facade in downtown, those types of things. But our discretion lives in our adopted ordinances. So if we, if our design review ordinance that said, anybody can make any changes they want to their buildings with no city approval, there would be no SEQA for that, because there would be no discretion involved. And so that's an interesting and, and unique nuance, and that's why certain communities are kind of seen as having higher SEQA thresholds or higher, more intensive development practices than others, because they've decided to make things more discretionary or less discretionary, and they have the right to do that, under those police powers. The project is the whole of the action, so you can't break something up in an effort to minimize the environmental impacts. And when we deal with developers, and they're trying to be thoughtful about how they do their projects, that's one thing we as staff have to be thoughtful about, is making sure that they're not segmenting their project to break it up to try to reduce the overall impacts. And we're looking for the potential for physical effects on the environment, and it's direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change. That's kind of the definition.
Quick, when you say to, segmenting to reduce environment, you mean segmenting to obscure environmental impacts or hide them?
It would be like, it would be like somebody who wants to build 10 buildings, but they come in one at a time, trying to not have staff go, well, the impacts of those 10 buildings are X, but just look at it one at a time.
So they're not actually reducing the impacts, they're just hiding them?
Yeah.
By chopping them?
Or chopping it, yes.
It usually comes up because a, a public agency is maybe acquiring a piece of property with the intention to build a sewer treatment plant, but they're just acquiring the property at that time, and they try to claim that, oh, well, there's no real impact with just acquiring the property. We don't have to study that thing that's going to happen later on. That's what, that's what segmentation's about. You can't split things up. You have to, whatever's on your mind, whatever your intentions are, have to be studied. You can't, you can't like do it. You can't do partial analysis, you have to, you have to study the whole of the action.
I'm worried, I'm wondering how this works with multi-use? Like, what if it's going to be residential on the top and like a bar on the bottom, and the pub crawl noise is way louder than the whole rest, you know, residential? How, how does that work?
Yeah, so what, what we would do, that's, that's a good point. So the residential portion of that use, they don't have, they're not a noisy impact, but a nightclub obviously is. So then we would have the applicant demonstrate like, okay, what is, we need a noise study that projects how much noise your nightclub is going to create, and then we're going to look at the noise ordinance to see what's allowed, and downtown's going to allow more than maybe way out on East Cattati. And so then, just to make an example, say the threshold was 80 decibels, and the study projected that on Friday and Saturday nights, they're going to have 90 decibels of music. And it's actually, there's, it tells you where to measure that from. And so then we would, if we wanted to approve the use, we would have to come up with mitigation measures to reduce that noise level to less than significant. And so that would be, they always have to have the door closed when the live band's playing inside. They have to have a certain type of construction between the nightclub use and the upstairs residential uses, so those folks can sleep. Certain types of windows to make sure that it has a sound rating, those types of things. We'll go to the next slide. So again, where does it not apply? So building permits, that's ministerial, you don't need to make a, we, we're not allowed to apply SEQA to that. Denials, so if a project comes in, they want to build 1,000 units on La Plaza Park, we don't need to study that. We just come to you and say, we're going to recommend denial, and ask you to deny the project. Like day-to-day administrative work, so although there is a cost, and we're spending money on it, it's, we understand that it's kind of day-to-day, and it's not going to be a significant departure from what we're doing. So funding or fiscal that don't commit to any specific project, right? So a tax measure for general city maintenance and upkeep, you would normally find that as being exempt from SEQA when we bring the resolution or ordinance to you to ask you to, to support that. Some decisions are, you can just clearly say, there's not going to be a direct or indirect physical change on the environment. And a lot of resolutions that the council gets, make that finding. They say, this is not a project, or there's no way that this could have an impact. And then certain instances, the legislature has said, we're just going to write an exemption for this. So like student housing proposed by universities, they recently did that. During the Olympics in Los Angeles, 1980 Olympic Games projects are exempted from SEQA, and it still lives in the law, because they wanted to be able to get them done quickly.
Isn't that what SB 35 is?
SB 35 allows projects to be exempt from SEQA as well, housing projects, and we'll talk about that. So we'll go to the next slide. So these are all the areas that get studied when you do an initial study. So there's, there used to be, I can't remember, 16 categories, I think it's now higher, I haven't added them up, but we look at all these different things, and you can think about it. In the county, they actually have mining activity, so you need to do an analysis of mineral resources, logging activity, forestry impacts, those types of things. But then, you know, other in town, we, we have half of Cattati or more of it is designated California tiger salamander habitat. So we have to look at biological resources here in the city. Cultural resources, we know that Cattati used to have, or even still has significant cultural resources, whether they're prehistoric or historic. So like historic buildings fall under that category, as well as tribal resources. Geology and soils, so we need to know the soil type to regulate and direct the type of foundations that are going to be constructed, those types of things. We'll go to the next slide. It's a three-step process. We, as the city, are the lead agency. We determine if it's subject to SEQA or not, if it's exempt. There's a ton of different types of statutory exemptions, so those are the ones that the legislature has written. So like installation of up to a mile of, of underground piping can be exempted. You couldn't use that out in west, west part of town, where there's no biological resources and greenfield, but in the middle of the city, like these pipeline projects, we've been exempting those because the state allows us to, and we need to be able to do business. And digging up a road and putting a new pipe in, it is not likely to have significant environmental impacts. Yes?
If we have a whole bunch of like pipe improvements on our capital improvement plan, is it still exempt, so I consider it segmenting?
So normally, so this is a kind of big trick. So the general plan will show all the infrastructure needs to, for the city to build out to that size and that number of units. And we'll study all the pipes that are needed in order, like, okay, our six-inch sewer that's in Main Street needs to go to a 10-inch sewer to accommodate upzoning this low-density to medium-density residential. That all gets studied with the general plan. Then that feeds into the CIP as funding becomes available year by year. So the environmental impact for the general plan has already anticipated those projects.
But that exemption's only as to.
Yeah.
Replacement and reconstruction. If it's an expansion, if you take a six-inch.
Correct.
Pipe and make it a 12-inch pipe, you got to do more analysis for that.
That's correct. But so that analysis will generally live in the general, will often live in the general plan, based on the big pictures, EIR that you've done. And then it's also worth noting, like, emergency projects are exempt from SEQA because the legislature identifies, like, sometimes just something breaks and you have to go fix it, right? And then there's categorical exemptions, which, those are certain categories of things, which we will use often in our projects that we bring to the planning commission. So it's the reuse of a building, an existing building, that's often categorically exempt, even if it might be for a bar or a nightclub. If it was something that was pretty close to that before, and we talk about how and why, it's likely to be similar, we might use a categorical exemption under SEQA. So we'll go to the next slide. If it's not exempt, then we get into that initial study process that we talked about to determine the impacts. We study all that laundry list of things. We have to use, if we're going to determine one way or another, it has to be based on substantial evidence. That's why we rely on all these specialists. So air quality analysis, traffic engineers, all those folks inform that analysis, and they're literally professionals, but that's all they do. What's not substantial evidence is, is somebody showing up and just saying, well, I believe, you know, they're, they're just a citizen, they may have a different perspective, they, they may not be informed on that. So that's not necessarily substantial evidence that can be used to make a finding of determination, like how significant an impact is. So just know that. Speculation, unsubstantiated opinions, all those things. And we'll go to the next slide. If a project finds that it's not going to, the study finds that it's not going to have a significant effect, the lead agency, we can do a negative declaration or mitigated ones. If it will, then it goes to EIR. There's a whole set of process around EIRs. We cannot approve a project that has a significant environmental impact if there's a feasible alternative that meets that same goal and objective. So that's where we get into studying the alternative. So that's the 100-unit subdivision with the 80-unit analysis I made earlier, I'm sorry, analogy, if it can be substantially less of an environmental impact. However, we'll go to the next slide. SEQA does allow impacts to occur. So you can, if a project is seen as important enough to impact the environment, the city can say yes to that, the city council can approve that. It can only be done within EIR, and it's through, done through what's called a statement of overriding considerations. And so in the grand scheme of everything, looking at all the potential alternatives that, for the project, the potential impacts, all the mitigation measures, if it still has an impact, you can say okay to that, as long as you do it in a fully public process, and you fully analyze all of the potential impacts, and try to minimize those impacts as much as you can. So just know that. But you can also say no to that. And so there will be some development projects that, using EIR, have significant unavoidable impacts, and the council does not have to say yes to that, the lead agency does not have to grant those. And we'll go to the next slide. Yeah?
When, when they buy credits for mitigation, is that parcel, or that area no longer can be used as a mitigation?
Yeah, so that's, so that's a good question. So in, in Cattati, because we have tiger salamander habitat, in order to develop in a large, large part of our city, you have to mitigate for those impacts by buying credits in a mitigation bank. And so what that is, is a part of the county typically, where it's identified as habitat, as very good habitat for tiger salamanders. And so just to make it easy, say you have to, you want to develop an acre in Cattati, you would have to study the potential, are there salamanders there? What type of habitat is it? Is it wetlands, is it upland? There's a lot of different factors. And then say you found, yes, there are tiger salamanders there, but you still want to develop it. So that means it's documented habitat, it's occupied habitat. So what the Fish and Wildlife Service would make you do is, you have to buy three acres that are documented habitat and occupied in order for you to develop on that one acre and impact it. That area that's preserved out in the mitigation bank could never be developed, and that will be habitat forever, as a way to try to preserve the species, but still allow development to occur in our cities or areas that we've identified as potentially where development should go.
Okay. And nobody else can use that same three acres to mitigate?
Correct, correct. And so that's why you'll see, if we don't know if there's salamanders there or not, the process is either you assume that it's the best habitat and it's occupied, which requires that three to one, or you fence it and have biologists go every day for two years to check, to see if you trap any salamanders in those areas. And you'll see those fences, they're the short little ones, sometimes they're orange, sometimes they're black. Two years of time to document whether there's salamanders there, yes or no, before you can tell, it'll tell, tell you if you can instead just buy one acre to one acre to, to mitigate for the potential habitat loss, even if it was not occupied. Yeah?
Is that what's, outside of someone village?
Yes, I believe. Yes, I believe so, I believe so. Yeah, so that's, I mean, you talk about some of the costs to development and why we've struggled sometimes. Not only do they have to buy the credits, three acres to one acre in some instances, but they have to test it and study it for two years before they can even get a straight answer. So there, I mean, there is significant steps and process. And then even if you do get to develop it, you still have to fence it. So if you guys go out to the end of Blodgett where they're building the new warehouses, they have what's called exclusion fences right now. So the whole area where they're gonna disturb, they're building the parking lot, the buildings, they put exclusion fences around that, so where anything that lives in there can get out, but it can't come back in. And then they have a biologist study before they do any work, and they continually monitor those to make sure that they didn't miss something.
If, if it is occupied, do they, do they move the salamanders to the new area?
They do, yeah, absolutely. So they don't just say, okay, you bought the credits, you're good, no. So it's called an incidental take permit, which, which requires a whole significant amount of undertaking while all the disturbing activities are going, that have qualified biologists on site that are certified by Fish and Wildlife to make sure that if there is something there, they're being moved and transported.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go to the next slide, you have vested, this goes back to John.
Yeah, this is my favorite part, are you guys doing okay?
I know, sorry.
Okay.
Almost there.
Yeah, okay. Vested rights. So vested rights are being eroded a little bit, and Noah's gonna get into that a little bit later. In Califor, California has a very strict rule that basically allows the local government to change the rules at almost any time. The only time a developer can really get the right to proceed with their project is if they get a permit and then they begin construction. They basically have to build a foundation before they get a vested right to proceed with their project. That's the so-called AVCO rule. When the Coastal Commission was created, the Coastal Act was passed in 1970?
I think so, yeah.
CEQA and the Coastal Act were passed about the same time. There were a bunch of subdivisions around the state that were sort of partially done.
Sea Ranch.
Sea Ranch, there's one in Newport Beach that's pretty famous, that the AVCO one came out of. They had built a bunch of roads and stuff, and, and the Coastal Commission sued and said, you can't do anything without a coastal development permit. And the developer said, wait a second, I got all these permits, what about, why can't I subdivide and build out all this project? The court said, no, you got no vested rights, you can't, you can't proceed, you're subject to the new rules. So basically, you can change your rules at any time, and unless the developer has a, has a permit and they have built the foundation, they're, they're stuck. So after that, the legislature adopted a, well, I already said all this, next slide, please. The developer, or the legislature adopted, because that was perceived to be a very harsh rule, the legislature adopted a couple of mechanisms to create, to allow developers to create vested rights. Because there was a perception that, 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 that strict rule would prevent developers from making the investments necessary to do bigger projects that require a lot of infrastructure investment. So one of those is development agreement statute. And basically, what, what a developer can do is come to the city and propose a development agreement, which would vest their right to proceed with development under the existing rules. You would be prevented by this agreement from changing the rules on the developer. And in exchange, you can ask for benefits, community benefits typically, things that go beyond what you could otherwise require of the developer. Many cities require cash payments, maybe they require the developer to complete a park or something like that. So just something in addition. Usually you get something in exchange for a development agreement. You don't have to get anything, but I think most jurisdictions seek some kind of compensation in exchange for a development agreement. Typically, they have a term associated with them, five, 10, 20 years, depending on the size of the development. It's a project, so it requires CEQA, it's usually done in conjunction with the project, but if a developer liked your land use plan and they just wanted to lock it in for their future, they could do a development agreement at any time, but it would require a CEQA analysis of some sort. There's a process, needs to go to planning commission, needs that public hearings of both the city council and the, and the planning commission. Anything else? I don't think, I don't think so. Next slide, please. Oh, let me go back to that previous slide, because I didn't talk about. There's another mechanism under state law, which is the vesting tentative map statute. So a developer can file for a, instead of seeking a tentative map, they can seek a vesting tentative map. And really, the only difference is they put vesting on it. And if they do do that, they get to lock in the, the rules in effect at that time. So it's really designed for residential developers to lock in the rules. So that's the traditional sort of unilateral way a developer can lock in the rules. And that was probably the biggest change that was made in the early, mid 80s to protect against the, the harsh AVCO rule. Next slide, please. Findings. California has this, this rule about findings, it's called the Tabanga Rule, which basically, if you look in your zoning ordinances and your variances, they all allow you to approve a project, but only if you make certain findings, that the project's consistent with the general welfare or something like that. The Tabanga Rule is basically, you can't just make a blanket finding and say, oh, this project's consistent with the general welfare. You have to, you have to offer support and factual basis for that decision in your findings. So as Noah said, you should be expecting your staff to produce factual findings that are supported in the record that are project-specific. They're not just generic findings about how this project's consistent with the general welfare. Any, you don't need findings for things like general plan amendments or zoning changes, those are legislative acts. When we're talking about findings, these are decisions where you're applying the existing rules, the existing zoning ordinance to a specific situation involving a piece of property. Anything else? All right, that's findings, next slide. The takings clause. We talked about the due process clause of the federal constitution. The takings clause is the other big federal constitutional requirement that applies. There's also a state takings clause, they're basically pretty similar. This slide has a lot of history that's not really relevant anymore because of the legal case. Basically, you cannot adopt regulations that have the effect of denying a landowner economically valuable, all economically valuable viable use of the land. So it's, it's a pretty high standard to meet, and it hasn't really been quite as relevant in the last 10 years as it had been in prior years because of the legal decision. If you do take someone's property by over-regulating it, you have to pay them. That's what the takings clause is all about. This is all derived from the eminent domain power, right? That a jurisdiction, a government has the ability to take property from a private party for public use. And the theory is that when you over-regulate your, 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 your taking property for public purposes and you should have to pay the private property owner. I don't have anything else on taking, so move on. Oh, Damian has a comment.
Actually, kind of a comment question. You know, when we were, when the general plan was done last time, there was a, there was a conversation about park area, especially on the west side of town. And the direction at the time, I believe, where we went was that we would identify the need for park space, but not say, the park would go here on someone's existing property. Because I think that was viewed as a, essentially a taking, because you're designating a specific parcel as a, no longer developable, but it's a, it's a park now. Or at least it would open up that door to that question, and that was a problem. So in the context of the general plan and in zoning, that was, at least in that example, that was something that we had to consider when we were looking at it.
Yeah, you can, you can plan on your general plan and designate areas for parks. So, I mean, it's, it's not atypical to show a park. Usually you would do it in a way that the park is shown on a piece of property that, a portion of a property that's, that it's gonna be developable, so that that owner is not in a position where they can force you to buy their property. Because if you wipe them out, you know, you, you show all of their property for park and they don't have any ability to, to build anything, they can come to you and say, hey, I can't do anything on this property, you gotta buy it now. So, so that's what you wanna avoid. I don't know what the specific situation was in the, in the last general plan.
It was a whole property coming in.
Yeah, that's why sometimes you'll see a floating park, it's just, it's gonna be over here somewhere. So you can avoid those questions until later. All right, next slide. Exactions. This is another one where it was, it was a, when I first started practicing, we talk all the time about exactions. It never really comes up. I guess we're not as aggressive as we used to be back in the day. But the, the federal constitution, state constitution, various state laws limit our ability to impose conditions on developers. And the big no-no's are taking property. You gotta be really careful about that. So require, we can require things like curb gutter and sidewalk, dedicating streets, because you need to be able to provide access to your property and comply with all of our rules, so that's no problem. But as Noah said, you really have to be able to justify requiring a developer to build a road across town. You have to be able to demonstrate that they're creating a need for the expansion of the roadway network that triggers the need for those improvements. You have to be able to, sometimes we call it a nexus. The nexus standard is a little higher than the real standard that applies most of the time, which is, there has to be a reasonable relationship between the exaction or condition and the development. The nexus standard is a little bit more technical and really has to do with, you know, like Coastal Commission decisions about access to property and things like that. The Mitigation Fee Act has a lot of requirements for impact fees. There's a distinction there between exactions that are made on an ad hoc basis, where it's a decision in front of you, and when you're making the decision about that particular development, you're imposing a condition or a fee payment requirement on that specific project. There's also impact fees, where you're at a high level, generally applicable. Everyone has to pay this fee based on the number of, the number of trips they generate, for example, or the amount of population associated with that residential development triggering the need for, for parks and fire and things like that. Those are, those are considered legislative exactions, and they're subject to much less strict scrutiny. The ones that are really scrutinized by the courts are the ones that are done on an ad hoc basis on a project, at the project level. So that's an important distinction to make. Anything else about exactions? I mean, staff usually is very careful about exactions, so we don't put the, put the commission and the council in a position of having to deal with a developer complaining about exactions. Most of the time, the developers accept the exactions. Once they've accepted them, they're often in a position that they have to decide between accepting the approval or, they can't, they can't, generally, they can't challenge the approval or they can't challenge the condition without, like, making their approval go away. So they have to be very careful about it. They do have the ability, if you impose a fee on them on an ad hoc basis, they can accept the approval and then sue after the fact on just the fee. So that's something we have to be careful about. But again, that's something Noah and I would always handle.
So the reasonable relation or nexus standard, I assume doesn't apply on things that are negotiated as part of a development agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have, have, has Cattati ever entered a development agreement with developers, do you know of?
Damian, you know, not since, I've been here since 2019, we have not. Roanoke Park has used them around the new square that they're building, they had some, but those developers went away also. You have to be careful, I mean, it's a fine line, right? So there's, similar to nexus, you can get a development agreement, but it's only worth it if the project actually moves forward and you can get the, the extra commitments.
And the development agreements are with a particular party, they don't run with the land or anything like that?
They do run with the land, actually. Typically, they don't have to, but, but typically, the, the owners will, or the, the developer will wanna have it run with the land so they can sell it. And sometimes the city will be concerned, well, we don't want, we know you, we don't want you to transfer it to somebody else, so we will, we will make it personal to that particular developer.
And, and they can have sunsets and stuff like that?
They can have sunsets, you know, they can have milestones. They typically have phasing requirements, yeah, they're, they're, they depend on what you want and what you want of the developer and what the developer wants from you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the commissioner's conversation about the, the West Cattati development and then not having a crosswalk and not having a way to get across and to Thomas Page School, you know, that whole... You know, why was that not an exaction? Right, like, why, why wasn't that? I mean, I understand that there aren't sidewalks on the other side, but it kinda feels like maybe with the bathwater kind of reasoning?
Sure, sure, so it's, it's more, you would study, how many trips is that development creating? Automobile trips, bicycle trips, pedestrian trips? And then we have what's called, in a separate area, that's a signal warrant. So after you get so many trips, then that intersection warrants a new signal. And if that project isn't demonstrated to be creating that warrant, you don't have the nexus to force them to fund it. In place, you get a fee that contributes to the future construction of it, then it would be a city project. And there's a lot of reasons why that one, because there was existing buildings, it was really only three, wasn't, it wasn't, it doesn't drive a ton of traffic in the big picture that would trigger infrastructure improvements to, to the level of the signal. So they did their own frontage, they put in bike lanes, they put in a crosswalk across Alder. But to that point, on, on the east side of Alder at 116, there's 177 apartments proposed. That project is creating the nexus, is likely to create the nexus to force a new signalized intersection.
Yes, just to ask a question with respect to the older areas in town, of which I did purchase a property in that. Do we, I mean, are we having exactations in those areas? Are we imposing too much on those areas whereby it may not develop? So the property I bought in 1996 had some, had, had some agreement from the council to redevelop it in 1993, but it turns out, they were so expensive that I was a fortunate, lucky person who bought it, because they said, I'm not gonna do it. But it was to have more sidewalks, which would have caused more stormwater impacts. So round, round the hub, round the older areas, I, I'm just, I'm phrasing it really just as a general question. Might it be that we have too many requirements for people to think of developing? I don't know, I'm just...
I hear what you're saying, so like, in a lot of downtown, there are no sidewalks, because the construction of a sidewalk would require the installation of a storm drain. That storm drain would be required to be connected to the major storm drain system. So to your point, a lot of the parcels in town are not large enough to drive the, to create the nexus to, to make all of those improvements, because there's no impact associated with, you know, building one new house on a small parcel that the city could then force them to do all the improvements necessary to take that stormwater and, and get it to the existing network. Some of the larger parcels in town, I'm thinking further north, they will have to do a substantial amount of infrastructure improvements. Not sure if that answers your question.
Well, I'm, I'm really asking the question, should we perhaps be having a standard of road, a country road standard that is safe enough that there can be some mixing of people walking and traffic? So I'm thinking the difference between lower VELP or ISO, even though that might have some more development on it. But for other parts of the town, really, to come back to, we have a, we have the exactations that might be required under current code, I don't know. But if we actually redesigned it so that, or re-visionized it, that it would be a very walkable street, meaning safe, and there could be more mixture of traffic and people, and that would fit with the general plan.
So you're saying, maybe a street standard that anticipates people walking in the street where the automobiles are also driving and bicycles are also riding?
Right, and so have a simpler configuration where we're not requiring all of the, any development in those historic areas to come up to newer standards, but it would just be a more friendly environment.
Yeah, I, I totally get it, I think that, I think the issue there, so yes, you could create a standard that is a country street standard, I actually think Cattati does need that because of the roadside ditches and not everyone, we like those, right? So we don't... of the roadside ditches and not everyone we like those, right? So we don't want to pave everything. But at the same time, there are a litany of other regulations and issues associated with putting vehicles and pedestrians and bicycles all on the same infrastructure. And some of it has to do with how you set speed limits, right? Just as an example, you all know that speed limits get set based on how fast people actually drive, not what's a safe speed. That's just one example.
So just to, you know, follow up with that, West Catari, where I live, all three do share the same road because there is nothing to separate them.
Correct.
Right? Which is definitely not the safest.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, so there's definitely the street design standards, which drive a lot of the frontage improvements. Sometimes putting a curb in front of someone's house is too expensive for them. And so it just stays undeveloped. But as Noah said, I mean, larger properties usually have no problem doing that. It's typically when you're talking about pretty small properties, they don't want to invest that kind of money. Because it's, you know, five, $10,000, maybe, or maybe more if you have to connect the storm drain up. But we also, you know, for areas that are that have been identified as significant bicycle or pedestrian routes, you know, we do either through grants or through traffic impact fees, collect money to try to complete gaps and systems. So that is part of a there's also that in addition to what maybe individual property are doing or not doing. So like in your West Catari example, there is a plan to connect the sidewalk to, you know, through that part that's unsidewalked now, probably an off-street path. But that's through the that's through a long term plan and, you know, pursuing grants and traffic impact fee money.
And and I think that's a good point. So, you know, everybody shares the term grandfathered. So what that means is like, if you built it according to the rules at the time, so when those subdivisions were done, no one said you have to put in storm drains and sidewalks. So that those were all legally built and they can be that way forever. And the city doesn't have the ability to force those improvements to be made unless somebody comes to us and wants to do something that creates the nexus that would force their improvements. But generally, the things that are done on those lots are ministerial. It's a building program. I just want to do an addition to my house. I want to build an ADU. Those things, they don't give me the ability to force you to build infrastructure, except what's necessary to serve that. Like a new, maybe you have to do a new water line because you now need fire sprinklers, but it's minimal. Okay, we'll go to the next slide.
All right. So this is my last slide. The main event is next. So hopefully you guys still have a lot of energy. Rights of the public. This is just a list of the different ways the public can enforce state law, federal law against the city, I guess. You know, there's all kinds of rules, notice and hearing, you got to make the proper findings, you got to have a fair hearing. You can't be financially interested in this decision. You got to comply with the Brown Act. Noah's got to make sure that the permit streamlining act is followed. Otherwise, it's a deemed approval. He probably won't be here very long if that happens. The Public Records Act, we got to make sure we comply with SEQA. It's really hard to comply with SEQA because there's a lot of uncertainty under SEQA and there's a new decision sometimes. The lawyers can't even tell you whether or not you complied with SEQA half the time. I know because I asked them sometimes. And then the voters also have the ability to pull a referendum at the end of the project. So in California, the public has a lot of rights in the development context. So that's the point of this slide. I hope that was helpful. Next slide. This is Noah.
Yeah, so just I know this is really wanted to focus on some housing things. So, you know, these are kind of the points that the state has made, the legislature in all of their recent housing changes. So availability of housing is vital, requires cooperative participation of governments. State and local governments have a responsibility to use our powers to facilitate the development of housing. And state laws requiring cities to include general plan housing elements. And we all know that we're doing that. We've been in the process for that for over a year. To remove the constraints on housing and primarily focused on governmental constraints that we have control over with the housing element. Go to the next slide. So HCD has interpreted those big picture goals to their goals are, you know, obviously the provision of new housing, preserving existing housing in neighborhoods, reducing the cost of housing development, and improving housing conditions for special needs groups. And so that's a lot of what you will see in our housing element programs and policies, trying to get to some of those things with the very limited ability that government has to address these really big picture societal things.
So I just I keep reading about this and I'm really curious, here in Catari, what do we do to how do we preserve existing housing?
Yes, that's a great question. So the council had an opportunity probably a year ago now, just over a year to the Windwood Apartments project came up for sale. It had been built by a private developer as a for-profit project, or I'm sorry, it was a non they were a for-profit developer who built a project using government funding that bought down the affordability levels that the rents could be charged. Those had a timeline on them and they were going to come up in about eight years. But the owner was consolidating all the resources and they were deciding to sell that property. Burbank Housing identified that as a as a project that they wanted to get involved with because it had deed restrictions. So they were it was affordable housing and some of those folks actually pay no rent. So I mean, it is very, very critical affordable housing for the city. Burbank said, hey, you know, city, we would love to do this, but we don't quite have enough money to buy it and then do some improvements because it needs renovation because it hasn't been renovated since it was originally built. So they came to us and said, city, how much can we can you help me with this? And the city contributed $250,000 and we wrote a check to Burbank Housing to preserve those units. And in exchange for that, we deed restricted. So we took that deed that said it had, you know, the restriction that said they had to be rented to very low income folks for another 55 years. So we bought we bought down that affordability level by our contribution. I mean, what a deal, right? $250,000 to get another almost, you know, four decades of affordability on that project. It's amazing. So that's one opportunity and one example of how we can do that. When we bring the housing element to you, which we've committed to March 28th for the council, you'll see a number of programs and policies where we're trying to do that. But it's a good question because we don't build housing. We're not developers. And so one of the main things we have to do is keep a sharp eye out for opportunities, try to have some money available when it's there. So keep getting the funds from market rate developers paid into our affordable housing fund when we can and be ready to strike when the opportunity presents itself.
I actually I actually looked on the Burbank Housing website and that is not on their website.
They may not have updated it yet. And I don't know when the they took control of it, when the website's been updated. They did, I believe they pulled building permits to do those renovations, but I don't know that they've really started.
Okay.
So the next slide, you all have seen this one. So this is a graphic of all the housing legislation that was proposed in 2022. I would say the legislature's been very busy for the last few years, really starting in 2017, and it seems like it's just been ramping up since then. So all of these laws were proposed as of March 22 that would affect housing in some way or another. If we go to the next slide, these are the ones that actually passed. So it's still unbelievable considering that this is the fifth year that this amount of legislative activity has occurred. You know, we have been as staff have been struggling to keep abreast and updated of these laws, keep the city compliant with them. The housing element has been a huge process. You will see a litany of programs and policies in the housing element directing us to respond to a number of these. But just be aware that it's a it's a constant catch-up game. A lot of our resources are designated to just trying to even understand what these things tell us because there's no there's they don't the state just passes them. They don't have to. They don't have to like, here you go, city, here's your guide on how to do it. HCD does try to do that. The attorney's office tries to help us with that. We try to keep ourselves up to date. But frankly, the volume is it's impossible to do that. I will just make that statement from my opinion. But we're doing a great job. So we'll go to the we'll do we'll go to the next slide. So as you all know, we're in our housing element process. We're planning on trying to bring it a document to you for adoption. It does commit us to a number of policies and actions, primarily in response to state law, but also in response to the issues we identified through a huge amount of community outreach to try to meet the needs of our community. It has to be reviewed and approved by the state by HCD. They've reviewed it. They've given us a four-page comment letter. You all will see that as a part of the adoption. And you'll see our response to how we're trying to address those further comments as a part of the adopted document. We have to identify sites where we're going to build the city's RENA, the regional housing needs allocation, which is about 250. Sorry, I don't want to quote a number right now.
137.
So it's, yeah, 237 units, I think, spread across all income categories. That's very low, low income, moderate income, and then market rate. All that will be very well documented in the document we bring you. But not only do you have to do that, you all also now have to show that you're you're going to be able to build affordable housing units in your areas identified as high resource. So the areas that are more affluent also have to provide affordable housing. And you can't concentrate your affordable housing units in areas that are in any area of the city. So it's the bottom line is that this six cycle process has become a whole new way to do housing elements. They've been required since 1980, but the state has really made a significant change in how you do that process, how you really analyze the needs of your community, and then how you demonstrate to them that you're actually going to meet those needs through these policies and programs. A lot of the state laws have been around ADUs and building ADUs. And you'll see, one of the things that we have to present is how many units get built every year. Catari only built ADUs in 2022. We did not build any other type of housing than ADUs in 2022. And we only built seven. So just know, I mean, it's it's good for you all to understand that. And we will bring a report that shows all the housing we've built over the fifth cycle, which is the last eight years. But, you know, we don't we're not we're the smallest city in Sonoma County. We have a lot of developer-owned land, but that's been faced by the market constraints of developers actually being able to build units. Kessing was great for the city as far as building housing. Seven of those homes were deed restricted affordable, the rest are market rate. But last year in 2022, Kessing was done and we only built issued permits for new units, seven. Jamie Lane wrapped up. So that I want to make the distinction and you'll see it in the APR. It shows permits issued, permits finalled, entitlements granted. So we approved Catari Station last year, 98 units, gave them 100% density bonus, gave them fee subsidies, gave them deferral policies. We're trying to do everything we can to help that project get built. It's for sale right now. So we have not issued building permits for that yet. So just know that we're doing everything we can, but we built seven homes last year or issued permits for seven homes and they were ADUs. So ADU policy has become a very critical tool for the city to be able to build homes. Go ahead.
Yeah, so since ADUs seem to be the new housing that we have available, do we have and do we have any programs or anything in place to make ADUs affordable?
Hmm.
Like to make them affordable rent-wise?
So we do not have any type of subsidy to formally subsidize ADUs. What we have done is we've partnered with the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center and we work with them to pre-approve a number of sets of plans. The council has asked to see those plans and approve them before we start marketing them as as plans that can be used. We're working on getting that before the council. That should happen in the next couple of months. So that's one way we've done it. We also really keep very much up to date with their efforts. We plug in our community members with them. We have information, but we don't have any fee subsidies. We may be asking council to do that as a part of the housing element update, and you will see that as a list of optional programs for things that we can try to do to generate more housing. One of the benefits of ADUs, and some of our staff have worked on this, is we started surveying all of our ADU folks who pull permits for ADUs and ask, how are you going to use this? What is your rent going to be? Not everybody wants to share that information. It's voluntary. But we did get specifically two folks said, this is for a family member to live in rent-free. We get to count that as affordable housing because it really is. And so we're trying to really get fine-grained into information we get on new development, both the ministerial projects, the ADUs are just building permits, and the bigger picture Catari Station projects where we have formal agreements, to try to really drill down on what what we're doing and what's providing benefits.
Right. So I participated in that survey. And, you know, ours is market rate because we just bought the house.
True.
But we would love to make it affordable if there was any way we could do that and still not, you know, still be able to pay our mortgage.
Yeah.
So so that's why I was wondering if there is something like that, because we would love to do that and just, you know, may have to wait a few years. But we'd rather not if there was a way of, you know, subsidizing that so that we could provide affordable housing and still pay our own mortgage in West Catari. Yeah.
Yeah. And so the council, that'll be a program that the council can consider. If it was going to be formal, it would be deed restricted. So we would likely ask you to sign a deed restriction or whoever was interested in that in exchange for that subsidy. But other ways are we could do and this report that we submit to the state is annual and we we're going to try to do our survey as much as annually as we can. So then as people's situations change, or maybe they pay off the loan they borrowed, maybe a different person moves in, they actually do give them a subsidized rent, we can take advantage of that and tell the state how we are actually getting some affordable housing units out of these kind of non-deed restricted, non-formal affordable housing units. But.
And some of the ADUs that are being built at the county level, unfortunately, what they're finding is they're being built to be VRBOs. People are building them because of the tourists. And when they ask them, so it's caused some little hiccups there, they're not being built as affordable units.
Correct.
Yeah.
Quick question about the the accounting of ADUs for affordable housing. In the plan, we get we get to sort of plan, what, point four affordable? I remember some formula for counting ADUs as affordable housing. Is that just by formula? Or do we have to collect data and get people to say?
We have to collect data. But there I would say the process has been evolving. So like even the last couple of years, we've been able to just almost look on advertisements for rent and what people are charging for X-size unit in Catari. It doesn't have to be a direct that is that building. And we could say, okay, we found 10 rental advertisements for apartments or housing. Then they ranged from 1,200 square feet to 400 square feet. Here's the price range. And then you can extrapolate that to apply it to your new ADUs that you issue permits for that might not be formally deed restricted.
But no, I think the question pertains to meeting arena obligation. A portion of that can be met through forecasts about ADUs. There's a formula under.
Yeah, that is correct. So.
I don't remember what the formula is, but it's based on your historic production, I believe.
Yeah. So so for demonstrating to the state that we are going to be able to meet our arena, right, which is this kind of the zoning exercise that will that's part of the housing element, they required us to say, okay, how many ADUs did you actually build? And then you forecast off of that. I will say our ADU production has like doubled every year since 2019, I think. So now it's becoming less of a forecast and more of like, here's real numbers. And we're not being overly optimistic in our forecast. We're just basing on real what we think we can do.
But they're not affordable.
They are not deed restricted affordable, but because we have documented that a couple of them are actually being rented at affordable housing levels, we are proposing to HCD that they be counted as affordable housing. And HCD has indicated that they will allow that.
Because it's average.
Well, in this instance, we have documented proof. Yeah.
So I know that we're going through a lot of discussion and we're doing very well on a lot of numbers and things. But there's been some discussion, I think in Catari particularly, that I've heard in different ways than other places. And the way it was phrased in Catari was that we want to maintain equality of life. So generational housing called it out for one of the Planning Commission reviews, but it seems like that's a slippery slope to really be 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 participating really in this this concept of a quality of life, which, you know, is a would become a form of redlining if it got too widespread. But I just I just heard some of that discussion last year. And, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a good idea to go down that path at all. And, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a good idea to go down that path at all. So just to explain, there was last year, not naming anybody who's not on the council now, but there were some references to quality of life discussions that Westside would have a better quality of, that there was concern about the quality of life by having too many ADUs or fourplexes coming in. So, so, you know, whatever that, and I think you already spoke to that, that there would be a requirement to some degree that it be mixed across the town. But there's been a lot of jurisdictions across California that have, you know, we've got a special version of a pussycat in our neighborhood.
No, I got you. So you're talking about NIMBY is what I'm hearing. Yeah.
Well, I'm talking about the discussion that, I mean, with the history that we've had in the past of redlining, of a society coming up with a version of something that excludes in some way.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, you know, I don't think, you know, my personal discussion on that is that Kattati's land use is all very, very well set, that having some more ADUs come in or places really doesn't make a big difference. I live in a duplex, and I bought the house because it was a duplex and rent out part of it, and it could count, I won't go down there, but it could count as a low rent. We've tried to keep that low and stuff. But at one point, it was actually, the area was rezoned for a couple of years where it was no longer allowed a duplex. And that's before we've had this whole sort of new impulse to be able to allow more, you know, allow the capacity that we have to be used, I think. You know, the urban capacity. So we've got a fair amount of capacity within Kattati that I think would add characteristic. In the West, I mean, up north in Portland, they've said you can build a quadplex on any plot within Portland. And maybe that's going too far, I don't know. But it's just that question really, if it doesn't seem appropriate to have a discussion about the quality of life for the current residents excluding all the people who can't, haven't bought in already. So it's just, I just wanted to phrase that. And generational housing called it out and said we should really be having policies that are much more deterministic. Or we do have policies, I think.
So thank you. I hadn't heard that expression, quality of life, before. I appreciate you explaining that. Thank you.
Just to add additional context, I have also heard the phrase, "In addition to quality of life," what was it? Sorry, I'm drawing a blank, but it's been talked about, talked about in other terms too. Oh, preserving the, preserving the character of the neighborhood and the small-town character. And I think there is a discussion of triplexes, like plex housing, and the idea that you can do gentle density by maybe redeveloping a small parcel as a duplex or quadplex or something, and it doesn't really increase how many units there are on that whole street by very much. And, you know, I remember last year, that conversation like that happening, and people saying, "Well, I beg to differ. I think that really would change the character of the neighborhood quite a lot and change the small-town character." So I think that's some of what Neil's talking about, conversations of that nature.
And so the housing element, I'm sorry, the housing law has just pushed us to try to address some of these things. So a good example of this is, design review findings used to be based on, you know, neighborhood compatibility. Well, what does that really mean? And the state has said, "No, you have to write objective standards." So that way you can measure it, and it allows a much more understandable threshold. They're allowing density bonuses as the council has identified and seen projects. And the council's been very supportive of granting density bonuses, even beyond what's required in state law, which goes up to 50%. The council has granted 100% density bonus for the Kattati Station project for a great project that really was trying to implement a lot of benefits for the neighborhood. By right, housing obviously is now a thing where, and certain laws allow large housing projects to be proposed in any portions of the city if they provide a certain amount of affordable housing, in some cases with no public process at all. That's a big departure and obviously very concerning to some members of the community, where something could just, obviously, just start construction with no input, no process. And we will be presenting our annual production report on all the units that we've built over the entire fifth cycle, because we're now coming to a close on that. And that'll be presented to the council on March 28th, before we have to submit it to the state on April 1st. So, no, that is coming. Also, as a part of the housing element, so there's just a lot of housing information coming to you in March. Current trends that we're trying to address, and the state has been trying to address, rising construction costs, household incomes, the issue of mixed-use development. So most of our plans propose mixed-use development, but the state has actually allowed pure residential projects in those areas. And so we're trying to grapple with that, because the community vision has been mixed-use, put people's services and amenities and jobs in the close proximity to their home, so they can walk and bike there. They don't have to drive. Some of that is being upended by the state laws that are allowing pure residential in those areas. Infill, obviously, very supportive of infill. Kattati has been, and all the decision-makers have been as well. Basically bumping up density and reducing parking. That's sort of the trend of the state law. Less discretionary review, as we talked about. And then coming up with creative methods to incentivize housing and pushing government to do the same, pushing local government to do the same. Some of the most recent prominent, some of the most prominent recent laws, SB 35, that is the process by where someone is allowed to propose affordable housing projects and just get a building permit. So they do not have to go through SEQA. They do not have to go through public hearings. That with, if we get an affordable housing project that qualifies for SB 35, I will be required to sign the building permit and grant that project. There has been a project proposed, SB 35, in the city of Kattati. It's available on the Projects in Progress website. It's proposed on the parcel across from the fire station. They have not qualified for SB 35. We're still in consultation. However, they are requesting it. And so just know that is under review. The community, we put that in the newsletter, so folks started to know about it, because we don't feel that it's fair to not inform the community that these are being requested. That's the only one we've received. And like I said, it hasn't quite qualified, but it is pushing to get there. SB 30 is a different project whereby someone, by coming up with a kind of a limited scope of information, can file what's called a preliminary application with the city, pay a reduced fee, and that vests their rights. So that gets back to some of the vesting issues that were talked about. You know, historically, cities might have changed processes and rules that then have upended and passed approvals. The state has responded by that, saying, "Okay, developers, you now have the right to submit a preliminary application under SB 30 that vests all your rights. Your fees lock in, all your rules lock in, and you only have to be subject to development criteria that are objective," which the council, some of the council and commission was a part of that adopting of the objective design standards. We really pushed to get those in place, so that way we can still have influence over the design of some of these projects and implement the community vision through the objective standards that get applied for these types of more ministerial or streamlined projects.
No, for how long are they locked in? Unfortunately, we have a tendency here for developers to hold on to properties for decades and decades.
That's a great question.
And that seems really unfair to lock in fees, you know, for 20 years.
Yeah, it's 180 days. So it has a timeline where they have to, it does put pressure on them to actually move with their development. So, and that's, I think, the state, as much as they've really somewhat taken away our ability to change some of these projects, they've also put some accountability efforts on the side of the developers to say, "If you're really serious, you have to meet some of these timelines." And so 180 days to file a real application, and then that real application comes in, we start a review process. There's some timelines that then get pushed on city staff that we have to meet. But also SEQA has to be complied with. And the law doesn't really seem to anticipate how SEQA gets folded into some of these processes. And so that's where I talked about some of the laws unsettled, and we'll just kind of have to see what the courts find out and how it gets decided. But we're doing our best to meet those timelines and work with folks to get projects that meet the code, implement the city's vision, but also we're responsive to them. The Housing Accountability Act has a, this is from the 1980s, this provision called Builder's Remedy, where if cities are out of compliance with their housing element, which Kattati is this moment, then a developer could propose a project that does not comply with zoning, does not comply with general plan. So all those rules that we talked about, spent so much time previously discussing, there's this out for when we're not complying with their housing element, that folks can propose a builder's remedy project. Density kind of doesn't apply. There's a lot of unanswered questions, what it would really mean. The interesting thing is SEQA still applies. So then you have this project that doesn't comply with density or zoning or general plan, but you have to still analyze that 25 lists, you know, issue, list of questions that you have to study. Is it a real benefit? In some communities, it might be, in some, maybe not. But we're pushing to get our housing element certified and be compliant and not be subject to that. But just know, as of right now, a lot of communities in Sonoma County and throughout the state are subject to builder's remedy. SB 9 is the duplex project that the mayor mentioned earlier, whereby almost everybody in California who doesn't have certain constraints, that I'll get to in a second, has the right to split their parcel, even if it's a house, split the house, build a firewall in between, separately connect sewer and water to each side and have a duplex. And then you could also add an ADU to each of those. So every lot in most communities, or many communities, has a right to convert to a duplex and split it and be sellable, you know, so you could sell off the other half through a ministerial process. It will not be public. It will not go through any procedures. They still have to provide the curb gutter sidewalk that we talked about. They still have to meet the subdivision standards. That lot has a driveway, it has access, it has all the things that you would expect from a unit, but it doesn't go through a public process.
Is that for new units or existing units?
Existing. Existing. Oh, so, so there's, so if it's not a legally-created unit, so say I have a house and I converted the garage without any building permits, I don't have the right to then sell that off without bringing it up to code, going through a building permit process. But there are some laws in that list that I showed you of the graphic that tell us that we create an amnesty program to allow folks who have illegally-built units and converted units to come in and not be penalized and be subject to maybe a little bit more streamlined processes, maybe a little bit reduced fees to get those units up to code and legalize it, and frankly, safe. So it's an existing home right now can be split legally, sold off, and then an ADU can be built on each one, under SB 9.
Assuming that doesn't apply to airspace lots.
I don't know how it would apply to condos. And that's what I'm saying, like, this is unsettled law. It's unsettled law. How would it apply to condo? I don't know. Because there's no minimum lot size or house size, you know, so...
Yeah, what about just building up like over your garage or like a second story?
All of that. All of that is allowed. But you would have to get separate utilities to it. So for a condo in the middle of a 100-unit condo building, it's not going to be financially worth it to run all the utility lines and all that. For an existing single-family home, if it's set up right, it would make financial sense in a lot of instances. And Marin County is seeing a lot of SB 9 projects. AB 2097, no parking can be required for any new residential unit within a half-mile of transit. That law is in effect right now. Went into effect January 1st. So it was interesting, again, playing catch-up on the laws. The cottage housing discussion we had probably doesn't legally apply. The developer who is interested in building a quality project wants to provide parking. I believe we probably do not have the right to require parking for any of those units under AB 297, which is in place right now. So we are playing catch-up, educating ourselves as quickly as we can. We have quality developers that are working with us, are willing to do projects. But no, it would not surprise me if we get into some of these instances where we realize something like we have after the fact.
So in the context of that, no new parking required. Round SSU, there are parking permits required on the streets because of the large influx of people coming in and stuff. What does it take if some parts of Kattati, let's say around the station or parts of East Kattati Avenue? I know it's a very constructed area, but if some of that was wanting to go down that path, is that a possible solution to...
Well, if folks want to regulate themselves, that's one thing, but the city mandating is another.
Well, that's what only I'm talking about, that there would be some sort of neighborhood in the city, which is what Rona Park's done for part of its neighborhoods.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't know.
When they were talking about Kattati Station and just the amount of cars with the parking, the community could have a parking management plan and work with the city to develop that. So that might apply in those certain neighborhoods.
And that's different than requiring a parking space.
It wouldn't be required, but that's how they might accommodate.
But are you talking about like residents would get like a, you know, permit K if you live in X number?
Yeah. And the idea there is to make sure your residents have access to parking in places where there's a large influx of public. So I think it's a different kind of category than mandating X amount of parking spaces per new unit being built. And I will say, there are some caveats to that related to life and safety. And a lot of it, especially coming out of the wildfires, you have to have an evacuation route. You have to have, so Santero is an interesting study, and I'm not willing to make a determination yet. But it may be an area where, because of the limited access, we could have some flexibility in that law. We would have to study it and make findings associated with it. But just, AB 297 is one of them. If you're interested in details, we can talk about it. Now is not the forum, but you could research it yourself, but we could talk about. Staff is not ready to make a commitment one way or another, but their AB 297, on its surface, says cities and counties cannot require new parking spaces for residential units built within one-half mile of high-quality transit, with some exceptions.
I'm sorry to ask this. Yeah, the, the high-quality transit, does it, do our bus stops count as high-quality transit?
Some bus stops do. I do not believe ours do. There have to be certain headways or, you know, frequency of pickup.
Okay.
Yeah. But the, but the smart station counts.
So, so we've settled that, though, that the downtown bus stops do not count as transit for AB 297?
I don't believe they do.
Okay. Thank you.
Based on current levels of service.
Yeah. There were a bunch, there were a handful of different transit-related laws, and they had slightly different criteria. So it gets pretty confusing. But in terms of high-quality, with that particular term, high-quality transit, that tends to apply to really busy bus stops, busier than anywhere we have in Kattati. Or rail stations or ferry stations, and we have the rail stations.
It would probably be more like Petaluma and Santa Rosa that have their own bus service that goes throughout their city in circles quite regularly, where we're really dependent upon either Golden Gate Transit or Sonoma Transit. That is...
So like Santa Rosa, they have the hub there near Fourth Street. I'm pretty sure that would qualify as high-quality transit.
Exactly, yeah.
Maybe one or twenty point.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's headway, right? It's fifteen, every 15 minutes during morning and PMP. So that's how it's looked at. You'd have to look at the bus schedule. But you don't, we looked, and you don't have anything anywhere.
No. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Not for buses.
So back to Neil's comment about the permits. I wonder if this, you know, this delightful cottage thing we just approved, if the parking spaces go away, then, you know, that would be a good place for them to, because the street parking was an issue, right? So I don't know if, if... Non-existent. It will, yeah. So if there was some kind of permit, if that might be a way of addressing it? I don't know. I'm just thinking.
I just want to mention, it, it sounds easy to have a permit parking, but you need to enforce it. And it costs a lot of money to do, to do parking enforcement. And if you don't enforce it, the people in the neighborhood jump up and down and make you enforce it. So it's costly. And so I've heard this debate in some other communities. And the managers will always say, "We are not going to do permit parking because it's very expensive." So, I mean, we've never studied that. You'd have to look at an individual neighborhood. And having enforcement just for one small neighborhood would be very costly relative to the value provided.
I mean, they were doing it out in M section because what was happening is the Sonoma State students didn't want to pay for a parking permit. So all of the M-section residents were not able to park on any of their streets because the students were parking on their streets and walking across over to the university to get out of paying for the permit. streets and walking across over to the university to get out of paying for the permit. And, you know, they, they couldn't use their streets, they couldn't. And in some instances, I, you know, heard where they were parking into their driveways and they couldn't even use their driveways. So, it's very, very specific.
And we have the free parking laws on smart here, they have to pay in other towns. So, we get a large amount of people parking for free, bring in more residents and cars, there'll be enough space because all the computers are parking on Santero.
Yeah. So, just, the council should know that we plan on engaging directly with Santero residents specifically. I'd like to meet with them, talk about these laws, talk about their goals or challenges and come up with some of the issues or some plans to try to address them as we do the rezoning to, to move away from the Santero plan, which envisions 300,000 square feet of office, to something that's more appropriate, providing residential next to high-quality transit in a way that meets the code and the state law. I will also say, most developers are going to provide some parking for, for their housing units. People want parking, they want access to parking, so we just need to be thoughtful about how we move forward, but.
And Noah, in fact, with the way that Santero plan exists today, when we approved the stations, it used up all of the allowable residents that were originally.
Correct.
Thought would be out there. So, that leaves an awful lot of parcels out there that really have no capacity with the current plan.
Yeah, and it's really driven by the current SEQA. Yeah. That's exactly right, yeah. And then obviously ADU regulations, they've changed every year, there's more on the list. I can't even tell you frankly what they say, but we're generally compliant, but just know it's, it's been changing. But, I, at the flip side of that, I do think some of the ADU regulations have been the most successful. So, one of our staffers did a study, he's, he's a grad student, Pratik, who was here. He looked at Richmond and I think they had in 2017, he said they issued two ADU permits and then they've been over 100 a year since 2019 when they, after they passed the law. So, it is effective, it is, there's going to be studies, academic studies showing that ADUs are a way to get housing built. And I do agree that's low-impact relatively. So, anyway, just know that that's been churning and we're staying up to date and we are going to propose some support programs to try to get them built more in town.
Hey, Noah, before we move off this slide, I just want to emphasize one thing about, which is Noah focused on the builder's remedy portion of the Housing Accountability Act. That's a, that's actually one of the more powerful tools in the developer, the residential developer's toolbox is the Housing Accountability Act. That thing has been around since 1982. I don't think I heard about it until about seven years ago. It basically says if a, if a residential project is consistent with the city's objective standards, it has to be approved unless we can come up with a public health and safety justification. There are many rules, policies, standards and requirements that we have in our, our zoning ordinances and general plans that are standards, but they're not objective, they're subjective. And so, if a developer can make a case that their project complies with all objective standards, even if it doesn't comply with what are considered subjective standards, they're entitled to an approval. And so, we've been seeing a lot of those Housing Accountability Act projects recently. Everyone has and Katati's been dealing with a few here and there. Most of the developers have, have not been able to demonstrate that they comply with all objective standards, so we, we pushed back on a few of them, but it's a very, very powerful tool that hasn't been used until recently.
So, that, that's separate from the builder's remedy part of.
Correct. I mean, the builder's remedy is in the Housing Accountability Act, it's got a bunch of stuff piled on, but yeah, it's a separate, separate requirement. The builder's remedy applies if a developer proposes 20% low income in a project and the city doesn't have a certified house, or doesn't have a compliant housing element. And then they can just basically do whatever they want as long as that's 20% affordable.
So, Noah, when, when is there going to be consideration with all the rest of our plans for infrastructure, for water and sewer to kind of marry with all of these laws that are coming in? Because it's not just hook it up and there's no impact. Because the reality is, is there impact? At what point do we reevaluate all of our infrastructure to see whether or not it can handle kind of this whole change in how we're doing it? Because we projected our, you know, all of our things out for a long time based upon a certain growth pattern and with this growth pattern, you know, at some point, we're going to have infrastructure issues.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And so typically, if, if a large project was coming in, we would have the nexus to be able to force them to study it, make the improvements necessary to serve their project. I think some of that is, it's unanswered, how we do that study for these larger ministerial projects, how, when, who requires it. And so, to your point, I do anticipate the city, I mean, our general plan was adopted in 2015. It's already getting kind of stale based on that timeline and then there's just been a whole change in all these regulations and frankly, the development potential and type that we could get throughout the city. I do think our general plan update will be a very significant one and we don't have a timeline identified for that, but I mean, I've been talking internally to Damian, probably by 2025, we need to have that scheduled and thought about and that's a significant investment for the city to make.
Because what we don't want to have happen is all of our infrastructure to start failing and then we have problems and we're kind of playing catch-up because we have failed infrastructure or we're not able to, to deliver water because we've kind of overtaxed. You know, I know the thought is for us to spread it out all over, but with the way these processes are, we don't really get to say anymore. It could ultimately end up pocketed and, and we really, you know, have to make sure that we can, we can provide the infrastructure.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add real quick that on a macro scale, the general plan anticipates a certain amount of development overall in the city. And so, we can generally track on a macro scale how we're developing based on what we analyzed, big picture. So, overall water demand, overall sewer treatment demand, you know, that kind of thing. But, you know, I think internally, we've been talking about, you know, for these ministerial kind of projects, when they come in, if there's a, if there's a known problem or it's a big enough development that we think there could be a, a real health and safety implication of them just hooking up to whatever's in the street, whether that's the water system, we'd think it might be insufficient, so we think there might be a health and safety issue there. Same with the sewer, because it might cause overflows, maybe the sewer line's undersized. So, I, I don't know where that conversation's going to ultimately end up, but that's what we've been talking about internally is that we can look at it through a health and safety lens if we think that there's an acute issue in a certain point in the system where like a development comes in. But, in terms of like overall, like planning by zone, it's a little gray as to how that gets approached, other than sort of the macro view of this is what we planned for overall and this is the kind of capacity we've developed in those years and just tracking it that way.
Yeah, and just the tools that we're used to using to figure this out are being taken off the table. And so, now we're having to kind of evaluate, how are we going to do that? And we're having conversations. We don't have, we don't have a clear path yet.
Yeah, I mean, it's become more apparent, you know, we don't have that problem because we're a bigger city and we're hooking into bigger treatment plants, but it was very interesting hearing about a lot of these smaller water districts and these smaller treatment, sanitary districts that they really don't have the money to change their infrastructure, that the capacity and the ability, yet it's being, so, we're fortunate in that, you know, we're bigger and can, you know, at least plan for some of this, but some of these areas, they're, they're kind of stuck with these rules and, and what's going to happen is they're going to end up with failed systems.
Yeah, or moratoriums, but I'm not sure. Yeah. But, so, just the next slide really quickly. So, while we have all of these regulations, there are some limits on them and the Tiger Salamander actually is a, is a big one because while the state made all these allowances for ministerial projects and processes, they did say if you're a designated habitat area, some of these things are off the table. And this graphic shows all of the hash, kind of cross-hatched portions are designated CTS habitat. And so, more than half of the city is off-limits for some of these ministerial projects. So, it's just worth pointing out and being aware of that. And, you know, there's been some, the Commissioner Hancock referenced, I think it was Woodside that tried to make itself Bobcat Habitat all of a sudden. You know, this is not that case, this is obviously Fish and Wildlife, this is adopted Santero's Plan Conservation Strategy designated habitat. So, it does limit the applicability of some of these laws, but large portions of the city are still available for it, so it's just to be aware of. We'll go to the next slide. So, just some.
I, I just wonder from that picture, I wonder if you could just show which way all our services go.
Oh, they all go out to the west, northwest generally for sewer and water.
You're talking about sewer and water services?
Right. I mean, the critical services for any type of urbanization. I mean, if we're, we're building in the southeast, it's a much more of a challenge because it's got to come through the city, it's got to come through all the existing systems.
In terms of like sewers and storm drains, yeah, it's to the northwest basically. Water is more distributed along West Sierra, East Katati, that's the, and some other production well points, but that's more evenly distributed, the water is. But sewer and storm drain is kind of northwest as Noah said.
And, quick question about the, the hashes. It looks like it's just the streets that are hashed on the west side or is it like the green hashes are also hashes? Like you see, there's like that whole area that's green and then the streets have the black and white?
Oh, so, no, the green is also, that, so that is a zoning map, so those are different zoning districts and then it has the hashes trying to overlay, it doesn't, it doesn't come through as clearly on some of the colors as others.
Okay, so it's all hashed?
It is all, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I think except for the industrial district on the top, right, everything else is hashed. Yeah, yeah.
And so then just going to the next slide, just some supporting information links, some more references to actual government code section, I know you all love to read that stuff and so I wanted to provide it. But, again, this is just for you to have in your back pocket for future reference. We're not going to do this again for two more years, I'll commit to that for you. So, hopefully you enjoyed it and you all stayed awake. Staff was able to stay awake, so I really appreciate everybody working with us. I know it's a lot, but it's just really important and the public can watch this now, we can reference back to it. But, so here's some additional information on some of the things we talked about. The ILG Institute for Local Government Planning Commissioners Handbook, excellent, excellent information for being a successful board or commission, council or commission level, it's just really, really good. And there's some information there specific to housing laws and policies if you want to drill down. And with that, we're available for questions if you have any, but just thanks for sticking with us, I know it's a lot.
I don't think anyone dares ask a question right now.
Well, thank you, that was very informative.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions? If there are no more questions by everyone and you're done, then we can adjourn this meeting at 10:02. And we'll, same, same place tomorrow. Different time, yeah.